It's 6:02, so I'm going to call this special meeting of Town Council. In accordance with MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, I have to inquire whether anyone's recording this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Didn't want any reminders, huh? Okay. Thank you. So, as we all know, the limited capacity of the hearing room has caused us to ask the public to please watch on television at home, or wherever they are, or stream it. So, that's why it's just you people who are participating, and thank you for coming. And you're certainly welcome to sit up here, or you're welcome to come when you talk, or whatever you feel comfortable doing. We appreciate you being here. So, we're going to start with a -- this is one of several workshops on water resources. It's going to focus on drinking water resources, each district's public water supply system, including infrastructure, capacity, future needs planning, and protection. Future workshops will focus on wastewater, surface, and coastal resources, and PFAS contamination, as well as other contaminations. So, we think that's about a total of three. The next one's going to be, I think it's around April 11th, but don't quote me. Yes, April 11th. And then, from there, we'll come up with the date for the third one. The purpose of this, of course, is to educate the council and the public, and we appreciate everybody's interest in this. And we like to hear what other districts are doing, so it's great to know what's happening. So, we've got to start with a roll call. A few formalities first. Counselors. Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Here.
Clark.
Crowe.
Here.
Levek.
Ludke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Meery.
Penn.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson. You have nine. Thank you. I would like to make a comment that the reason Counselor Clark is not here this evening is she did not want to force a quorum for the West Barnstable District, and therefore we would have had to post meetings and do joint meetings and all that stuff. So, she is watching at home tonight, so thank you to her for allowing that to happen and accommodating us. So, next, we'll do a Pledge of Allegiance, and then a moment of silence.
Continuing with our theme of having a veteran conduct the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to invite Counselor Ludke to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, thank you. So, how this workshop's going to work, it's going to be a lot more casual than normal Town Council meetings, I hope. Mr. Santos is going to lead off with his drinking water supply and groundwater protection for the town, and then we will go through each water district. And I'm hoping that you can tell us, since you're presenting, when you would like to be bothered with questions and comments from Town Counselors, if you'd like to wait to the end of your presentation and your comments, or if you want to be disrupted by hand raising in between, because I'm hoping for robust conversation, questions, and answers. Okay? So, up to you to direct that on your comfort level. So, Dan, would you like to start?
Good evening, Counselors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. So, as President Penn had mentioned, we're going to be talking about drinking water, groundwater protection, kind of the history and approach to protecting this valuable resource in the town of Barnstable, which has been ongoing for decades, in fact. We've recognized quite some time ago that we needed to protect this resource in order to have it be here for when we need it, now and into the future. So, I have a slide show here I'm going to go through, and talking about what the regulations and laws that drive this, and how, from the federal government right down through to local government, how we address protecting our water resources for drinking water supplies. I would ask that you hold questions until the end, primarily for, in the interest of time, because I think it takes a lot longer generally to have questions, and we get down into details, and before you know it, a lot of time has gone by. So, hopefully, that works for you. So, I had done a presentation called Groundwater 101 recently, I think it was sent to you all, but, and I'm not going to go through that in its entirety, but what I did want to do is touch on a little bit of that for those that may not have seen it, or for those that are watching from home that have not have seen it. And it kind of sets the stage and the context for the protection efforts. You know, why are we doing this? So, it all starts, as you can see here, with the water cycle. And the water cycle is one of the most important ecological processes in the world. And there's a finite amount of water in our world, and it is controlled by the water cycle. And 90% of the water on Earth is salt water. About 70% of the Earth is covered by water, but because of the depths of the ocean, about 90% total of, and that's salt water. And so, 10% of the water on Earth is fresh water, and that's held in rivers, and ponds, and streams. The atmosphere, our bodies, and, most importantly, to our drinking water supplies, is beneath the ground surface. And if you look at the cycle here, and it is really a cycle, that seawater evaporates, and what happens is the pure water evaporates from the ocean, not the salt. It's just the water. And that evaporates up, turns into condensation, forms clouds. Those clouds flow all over the Earth, and they go over the land masses, and then precipitation falls in the form of rain or snow, depending on the time of the year or where you are. And that precipitation then creates runoff, and runoff goes into the ground surface, and also goes into ponds and streams and lakes. And ultimately, that water infiltrates from the ground and into those water bodies beneath the ground surface into the groundwater. And then, that groundwater flows out to discharge at oceans. And so, that's the cycle. It goes from ocean back to ocean. And so, we take advantage of that fresh water that falls on the Earth's surface, Cape Cod, and becomes our groundwater, which we use as a drinking water supply. So, that's the water cycle, so important to us on planet Earth. So, just a few terms about what groundwater is and how it works. Groundwater is basically water that is held beneath the ground surface. And we saw how it gets there through the water cycle, and it percolates down through the Earth, and it fills the spaces between the particles of soil. And if you look at this graphic here, on the left is represented by rock. Rock, most rock has cracks in it, and so, bedrock, and a lot of places that have rock beneath them, unlike Cape Cod, they have groundwater too, and it just happens to be in the cracks in the rock. But here on Cape Cod, where we have sand and gravel, you can see on the right, the particles of sand and gravel fit together. So, the groundwater is held in those spaces, those pore spaces, between the particles of soil. So, if it was large particles or rocks together, you know, they don't fit together as well as sand does, so there's lots of pore spaces, lots of open space for that water to fill. But if it's sand, much smaller particles, they can pack tightly together, then there's much less room for the water there. So, that's the porosity. And so, the ground, the water that infiltrates the ground fills up those spaces, down to the bottom of whatever that layer is beneath the sand and gravel, usually bedrock. So, that becomes an impermeable layer, and on Cape Cod, that's about 200 feet down. So, we have 200 feet of sand and gravel generally across the Cape. And so, that water fills up to a certain point, and when all those pore spaces are filled, the water at the top there, that's called the water table. And that's the transition zone between the soil that's filled with water and the soil above that's not filled with water. It's a mix of air and water. And that can vary in thickness. The water table on the Cape varies from zero to several hundred feet. And in Barnstable, around the airport here, in Mary Dunn, it can be 100 feet deep, and it does vary throughout the community. And so, here's a look, looking east of Cape Cod. If we sliced through the ground to look into Cape Cod, this is what we would see. And that area of fresh groundwater, that is our aquifer, or aquifer. And what an aquifer is, is a geologic formation, in this case, sand and gravel, that can transmit in whole water, that can be extracted for drinking purposes. That's an aquifer, simple as that. It's just, but the aquifer is the geologic formation. It's the sand and gravel. And you can see also on the left and right, on the Cape Cod Bay side, and on the Atlantic Ocean side, or the Sound Side, salt water. The salt water in those water bodies, but also, there's salt groundwater beneath the ocean and the Cape Cod Bay. And so, our fresh groundwater, because of density differences, floats on top of that salt seawater, and that's what you see here, this floating fresh water beneath the land of Cape Cod, which is our aquifer. And that groundwater, you can see by the arrows, infiltrates on the ground surface, there's the water table there, and then flows out to the ocean ultimately. That doesn't reproduce very well. Hopefully, you can see it on what's in front of you, and what this simply is. It just shows that our aquifer is made up of several lenses. There are six lenses, and all that means is, there are distinct areas of the aquifer that do not communicate with one another. So, water doesn't flow from the Sagamore lens to the Monomoy lens. There are breaks, and usually, it's rivers or inlets, water bodies, that are those dividing lines. And these lenses are literally that. If you can picture a lens sitting, or drop of water on a table, that's a lens on a big scale in our aquifer. So, these are mounds of groundwater, and those are important on the Cape. So, I mentioned a moment ago that water travels, when it infiltrates, out to the ocean, and the U.S. Geological Survey has calculated travel times on Cape Cod. So, how long does it take groundwater to move from, when it gets to the water table, to the ocean? And you can see here that it can take anywhere from less than 10 years to more than 100 years. So, on the, basically, down the center of the Cape, where the midcape is, and the area on the base, you see those blue areas. It takes 100 years approximately for water, rainwater, drop that falls there to get to the ocean. So, it's not moving very quickly. It moves about a little less than a foot a day, in general, on Cape Cod, more or less in some areas. Obviously, the geology is not homogeneous. There's boulders, and there's more gravel in some places, and layers of sand and silt, and all that affects travel time. But these are generally how long it takes. So, it's good, obviously, for planning purposes. It's good to know, when you have contamination of the groundwater, how long it takes for that contamination to move, because the contamination generally moves with the groundwater in bulk transport. So, as we speak about contamination, and it's important because what we're doing with our groundwater and water supply protection is protecting from contamination, because if we contaminate our groundwater, then we either can't use it, or we have to treat it, and so, protecting it eliminates having to do that. And you can see here the various routes by which contamination occurs. These are common things that contaminate groundwater, landfills, former landfills, open dumps where trash was just buried, and this happened for hundreds of years, honestly, throughout this country and other places in the world. And that trash sits in a hole, but rainwater infiltrates through that, just like it does through soil, and as rainwater goes through whatever in the landfill, it picks up those contaminants, draws them right down into the water table, into the groundwater, and creates plumes of contamination. And that's where you see that large area beneath the landfill with the arrow that's depicting a plume of groundwater contamination, and it's moving towards a well. A well is simply a hole in the ground from which you can draw groundwater. That's literally what they originally were, were holes dug in the ground, hand dug, sometimes lined, and they would put a bucket down there and pull water out. Then eventually, we develop pumps, hand pumps, and finally, electric pumps, but it's the same, it's all the same thing. We penetrate down into the groundwater. The bottom of that well or pipe is open, and the groundwater flows in there. There's a filter in there, a screen, so that sand and other particles don't get in there, and you draw off that water. And if a plume happens to be in the vicinity, that's going to get drawn into that well. And that's what's happened here on Cape Cod. That's what happened to our wells. That's why we have PFAS in our wells, from exactly this process. Other ways that groundwater is contaminated is through onsite sewage disposal systems, or septic systems, septic tanks. They're meant to dispose of waste onsite, and they do a good job of, for viruses and bacteria, they do a good job through the filtration process and other processes. But our wastewater is filled with nutrients, primarily nitrogen and phosphorus, which are groundwater contaminants, both for drinking water and for our environment, in both freshwater and saltwater. And they, those nutrients are just like fertilizers. When you fertilize your lawn, you're fertilizing the water body, creating more growth, and that ultimately chokes off the ability for finfish and shellfish to survive. Runoff can be a source of contamination, so particularly where you have impervious surfaces, roads, parking lots, roofs, any built environment where we've removed the soil, removed the trees. So, if rain falls on a parking lot, well, all the cars that drip their little drops of oil, or antifreeze over the years, that water gets collected and goes into runoff, either a drainage system that's designed, or perhaps off into a stream or river, or right into the groundwater. So, pesticides and fertilizers can contaminate our groundwater through runoff. And there's lots of other ways, but these are the primary ways, particularly on Cape Cod, actually nationwide. The primary source of groundwater contamination is septic systems and runoff. You'd think these other things would be, but it's, the septic system is a very significant So, after those basics, there are federal, state, and local laws, ordinances, in the case of the town, that control and regulate drinking water. And the U.S. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, is the federal agency that controls and regulates drinking water. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection regulates drinking water in the state, and they implement the federal regulations. And then, the town of Barnstable controls the protection of drinking water locally in town. The primary U.S. EPA law is the Safe Drinking Water Act, 1974, which was amended in 1986 and 1996. And basically, the Clean Water Act creates minimum standards that water suppliers need to comply with to provide safe, healthy drinking water for public water systems in the United States. It creates national drinking water standards and regulations, which provides standards for contaminant levels. So, there are primary standards, which are the maximum contaminant levels of chemicals that are allowed to be in the water, and if you're beyond that, you need to either treat or not use those sources of water. Again, I'll bring up PFAS. That's a recent addition to the state standards, and the federal government is actually thinking of making even more stringent standards than we have in the state for PFAS. So, that could be something we have to wrestle with in the not-too-distant future. There are also secondary drinking water standards, and these are things like taste, and odor, and chemicals, copper, iron, manganese. They're not necessarily harmful to health, but they do make the water unappealing. So, they're not, we're not regulated to remove those things, but they, it's recommended, and so, we strive to, you know, our water suppliers, and they may talk about this, but we strive to meet these standards for secondary drinking water standards, because we want to have the best water for our customers, customers that we can. The Safe Drinking Water Act also looks at unregulated contaminants. So, these are the things that don't have MCLs, but that health information, studies, other information that the EPA gets has suggested that these could be a problem in our drinking water, and that's how PFAS came about. This was an unregulated contaminant, or you may have heard the phrase "contaminants of emerging concern," and these are, as science gets better, as we study more things, we make the list of contaminants that we're concerned about, and we regulate longer. And again, that's how PFAS came to light in 2015, 2016, when they start, they put the Health Advisory out, which is what they usually do for us. They haven't regulated it, but they're recommending that you address it, because it's likely to be an issue. And in our case, in the town's wastewater system, we addressed PFAS at that point. Consumer Confidence Reports. So, water suppliers need to tell their customers every year how they're doing, and the way they do that, and here's, I use Kachewitz, but all the water systems have this, and basically, it talks about what contaminants might be in the water system, and how they're being addressed, what all of the levels that they're monitoring for, and things they monitor for throughout the year, what they are and how they compare to the standard. You see here this information on the flushing program, and how to save water, not wastewater. Talks about some of the regulations in general that they have to comply with. So, this is a requirement of the federal Safe Drinking Water Act, and something that consumers really need to pay attention to, because there's a lot of good information that comes out in these annual reports. Also, from the Environmental Protection Agency Regulations is the sole-source aquifer program. And a sole-source aquifer is simply a, an aquifer, we talked about that, it's a geologic formation that we can draw water from for drinking, that supplies 50%, more than 50% of the drinking water for an area. And on Cape Cod, it's 100%. All of the drinking water on Cape Cod comes from groundwater wells, except one in Falmouth is a surface water supply, but that is supplied by groundwater, the same aquifer supplies that surface water. So, 100% of the water on the Cape comes from our aquifer, and there are no alternatives. We're not going to truck water in from off Cape. It just, it's not a reasonable alternative. And under the sole-source aquifer program, the EPA may review projects that are being proposed in the area, and in this case, it would be Cape Cod, because that's the entire area covered by the sole-source aquifer, and it's projects receiving federal funding. So, that's where their jurisdiction comes into play relative to the sole-source aquifer program. Move on to Mass Department of Environmental Protection Regulations. This is run by the Bureau of Water Resources, and within the Bureau of Water Resources, they have the Drinking Water Program. And the Drinking Water Program promulgates and administers the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations, which is CMR 22. And basically, this program is designed to regulate drinking water systems and purveyors in the state, so that the water that is being provided to customers is fit to drink and safe and healthy. And they do that by doing a number of things that you can see here. So, they, for public water systems, they permit public water systems, which is actually a very long and complicated process. They want to make sure that if you're going to have a public water supply, or even a well within an existing public water supply, that all the environmental work is done, all the testing is done, there's pump testing that goes on. They want to make sure that that well will supply drinking water that's safe, meets standards, and it's not going to run out, that it can be considered a permanent source of water supply. So, they also look at the construction, operation, and maintenance of public water systems. So, they review all the plans for any well construction or treatment systems. They're very involved in reviewing that, commenting. They establish maximum contaminant levels for the state. Now, the state, they have to comply with the federal maximum contaminant levels. They can't be any less stringent, but they can be more stringent, so the state can have a higher standard than the federal government does. And then, they're responsible for both surface water supply, because in some area of the state, some areas of the state, they are relying on, what's the word, reservoirs, sorry, and then groundwater supply. So, for groundwater supply protection, and that, because that's our issue here, rather than surface water, they're guidelines, they have guidelines and policies, they have basically a book that we have to utilize to make sure we comply with. For sources, there's regulations for sources below 100,000 and greater than 100,000 gallons per day, but since we're all greater than 100,000 gallons per day, then I've just used those here. Must achieve water quality standards. We've got to comply with those MCLs. We have to determine a Zone 1 and a Zone 2. A Zone 1 is the 400-foot radius around a public water supply well, and basically, you have to own or control that entire area, controlled by a conservation restriction or easement. But basically, they want to make sure that the water supplier has control over that 400-foot radius, because that's the most direct and closest to where the well is taking water out of the groundwater. And the Zone 2, Zone 2 is the area that contributes water to a well, and they calculate that area based on, they do a model, and they look at, if we pump this well at its maximum yield, or how much water it's allowed to take out of the ground, if we do that a maximum of 180 days, so six months, pulling that maximum water out 24/7 with no recharge, and recharge is just rainwater that's infiltrating back into the groundwater as part of that water cycle. And so, they calculate the area, so if during that period you had that situation, and it's extremely conservative, it's not anything really that's going to happen, but it's meant to be conservative with appropriate factors of safety. So, the area that would contribute water to that well, so what water would come into that well, and then you map that out, and then we have to regulate what goes on. And then you map that out, and then we have to regulate what goes on within that area because if it did happen and there were sources of contamination on the ground, then those contaminants could get into that well. There's a monitoring well program. In other words, we have to have wells that aren't used for taking water out for drinking, but simply to monitor and to take samples so we can see what's coming. And there, it's a, basically, we put in a fence line or a, a group of wells that give us notice if there's contaminants coming to the well. And we have them in various locations away from the well. We want to have as much notice as possible if, in fact, there is a contaminant that, or plume that's heading that way. They, they require wellhead protection zoning controls, and then importantly, is the Source Water Assessment and Protection Report. And the amendments to the Safe Drinking Water Act in 1996 required that all water suppliers of a certain size, which includes all of the water suppliers in Barnstable, put together these reports. And so they were done, they had to comply with this in around 2000, 2003, I think, or '04 was the deadline, and that's when most of these were put together. I don't expect you to read this, I want to talk about what it says, but this is, that's just what the form looks like. And this, this one happens to be for the COME Water Department. So every water, so COME, Kettuit, Hyannis, and Barnstable all have these Source Water Assessment Reports that they completed. And we, we still work with them, and water suppliers should work with them because, so what they do in this, this plan is they inventory land uses. So they look at, in the, within the zone two, within their area of responsibility, what's everything that's going on? So they want to know whether there are gas stations and how many homes, and whether there are wastewater treatment plants or former dumps, or just anything that's going on in those areas. And then they assess the susceptibility to contamination from land uses. So high, medium, and low. And if you look in that form, that's what you'll see, is there'll be a table, and they'll, by each well that the, the supplier has, there'll be a table showing all the land uses in the zone of contribution for that well, and then whether these sources can be considered high, medium, or low relative to susceptibility. And then they have to publicize these results, and that's what this, the swap, they call it a swap, does is publicize that result. It goes to the state, and the water supplier should be using that because it also includes recommendations to address each of these areas of susceptibility. And that could be anything from working with the town to implement zoning controls, which was done in the past, and by informing citizens of what's there, making other recommendations about water conservation perhaps, and the things they're looking at in particular, residential land uses, because as I mentioned a few moments ago, septic systems, on-site septic systems are a major contributor to groundwater contamination. They look at transportation corridors, in other words, roads. Do you have roads going through your zone two or your zone one? If you look at these reports, they also look at the zone one. There are, there are roads that go through some zone ones, and so that needs to be addressed and identified and how issues might be mitigated. And so it gets into response planning if there ever is an issue. Has material storage in use, locations where that may, may be? And if you think about gas stations, or Home Depot, or Tractor Supply, hardware store, all these places have materials that could be contaminants to our drinking water system. And then finally, oil and hazardous material contamination sites. These are sites that have been identified where there's been perhaps a former gas station that had a fuel leak and hasn't been completely cleaned up, or the site's been cleaned up but there's groundwater contamination beneath. So relative to wellhead protection planning, there's, these are some of the primary reasons that, that you want to do that, and it makes a lot of common sense. Obviously, we're going to protect the drinking water at the source by protecting the area that feeds water into that source. If we're protecting the area, then we don't necessarily have to do as much monitoring. So if we control that zone one, we own it, there's nothing in there that's problematic, then the state doesn't require you do, to do as much monitoring. Obviously, if you haven't contaminated your source, then you either don't have to treat or you can minimize or reduce the amount of treatment that goes on, prevents cleanup. And then obviously, if you've contaminated a water source beyond use, then you have to get water from elsewhere, either from a new source, and we're constantly going through that, thinking about, as are all the purveyors. Do we need new sources? We try to calculate what the use of water is going to be in the future, short term, long term, and develop those sources so that we can meet the needs down the road. Water purchases, it's real. Hyannis had to do it relative to PFAS. We had to buy water from Yarmouth because we didn't have enough because we had to turn a number of our wells off. And during that time, we were purchasing water, and it was very costly. And then finally, we're ensuring clean water supplies for future generations. This graphic shows the Cape-wide zone twos, zone ones and zone twos. So the green is the zone one and the wellhead, and then the yellow there is the zone twos, just to show you how, how much of the Cape is covered by these areas. And then here's Barnstable. These are the zone twos for the wells in Barnstable. A lot of them overlap, so there's a lot more wells than you see specific areas here. That's because they, they do overlap. And these are the areas that we want to control through regulation and zoning, in which we do, in fact, do that, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. So in the town of Barnstable, we have groundwater protection overlay districts. As part, so zoning is our primary means of protecting our groundwater supply. We also have Board of Health, and they have regulations relative to on-site septic systems and private wells. So that's, that's who deals with private wells in the town of Barnstable. And those regulations address contamination to private well sources from septic systems. It's controlled by Title V primarily, that they administer how far you can be, you have to be, but, or between a well and a septic system. And land acquisition obviously is another means of water supply protection. So in, in the zoning, we have several overlay districts. So there's the, the underlying zoning, which is effectively whether it's commercial or industrial or residential primarily in, on, in Barnstable. But these are overlay districts which have additional criteria that have to be met relative to groundwater protection. And so there are three. There's the aquifer protection overlay district, the groundwater protection overlay district, and the well protection overlay district. The well protection overlay district is effectively the zone two. So the zoning map mirrors the zone twos, which I just showed you, and we just talked about, those funny-looking lobed areas. The groundwater protection, I'm sorry, the well protection, that's the ground, I get confused. The groundwater protection overlay district is the zone twos. The well protection overlay district is a five-year travel time. So similar to the modeling that was done with the zone, creating the zone two, they could do this, what water, what water would come to this well in five years? So we know how fast groundwater moves on the Cape in particular areas. We talked about that a few minutes ago. And so they map the area within which groundwater would move in five years, and that's the other zone that's identified in our zoning. The aquifer protection overlay district is all of the other areas, and I don't really know the history of that. It's unclear, and that may, perhaps that would come out later, but what's, because the other areas just allows the regular zoning that occurs. And, but what's most important is the groundwater protection overlay and the well protection overlay. And you can see here what that looks like. This is our zoning map showing the groundwater protection overlay, the zone twos, and then the wellhead protection, the five miles. And our regulations basically prohibit many activities in these areas. And I'm not going to read all these, but if you look in the zoning bylaw, zoning ordinance, you'll see that all of these things are in there. This is what we don't allow in these areas because these are potential groundwater contaminating activities, land use activities, and just highly, obviously, landfills, automobile junkyards, storage of road salt, stockpiling snow and ice because snow and ice gets scraped off the roads. If we're moving it somewhere else, it's just like runoff. It can get contaminated with oil and grease and, you know, drippings from cars. Chemical laboratories, furniture stripping, painting, dry cleaning. Now, we have, we have a lot of these activities in town, and some of them, in fact, are in our zone twos. And so we have to manage and be mindful of that as we manage our water resources. But our groundwater overlay districts prohibit, both of them prohibit all these activities. And finally, land acquisition for groundwater protection. So between 1999 and 2006, we had the land bank, and after 2006, then and now, we have the Community Preservation Act Committee. They have been actively pursuing open space and land acquisition, not necessarily exclusively for groundwater protection, but frequently that is a, one of the, either added benefits or one of the prime reasons for protecting land. And between those two programs, since 1999, 963 acres in Barnstable have been protected for water supply protection purposes, among other, other reasons. This is just a map showing all of the protected open space in the town of Barnstable. So it's, it's much more than that was just shown from those two programs. What we haven't done, and getting this presentation ready certainly made me think that we, we should probably go through this exercise, is which are specifically, and we can make a layer working with our GIS system, which are specifically relative to water resource protection and groundwater protection? So I think that would be an important additional layer of our mapping to know where we've actually set aside land for water protection. We just haven't gone through that exercise. We have the information, and I didn't have enough time to do it for this presentation. But I wanted to go back. So there's been, what I wanted to address, and some of the questions that came through, I'll address those in a minute after, after you have an opportunity to ask questions. But one of the things I wanted to talk about, there's been lots of talk about transformers, electrical transformer stations, substations from Eversource and the wind projects, and their potential impact on our aquifer. What you won't see here on this list of restricted activities is transformer substations. And you won't see it on the state list either because, and the reason is, they're not considered a threatening land use to water supply. And there's several reasons for that. Substations and the dielectric fluid that, that is in substations is a mineral oil, which is a highly refined petroleum product, the most highly refined petroleum product. And years ago, you may have heard of PCBs. We don't talk about that much anymore, but PCBs were a major contaminant in this country because the dielectric fluid used to contain PCBs because it was more effective and efficient for that electrical equipment. But they realized that was an environmental contaminant. So that was removed more than 40 years ago from transformers. And so dielectric fluid today is not harmful as when it included PCBs. So dielectric fluid has a very high viscosity. And viscosity is simply how well, the ability of a material to flow. Okay? So water is, has a very low viscosity, flows very easily. Mineral oil is more, more like, you think about, not molasses, that would be really high viscosity, but somewhere in between. It's fit, mineral oil is 50 times more viscous than water. And so what that means is it doesn't flow like water. So if there was a spill or leak of dielectric fluid, it would sit on the ground surface. It would not, it's not going to flow out and into the ground like waterwood or gasoline or other more, less viscous fluids. The issue with that is you can address it and you can clean it up. So if you had a spill of dielectric fluid, you could, you could cover it. If you couldn't deal with it soon as possible, it's not, it's not going anywhere. Or you could dig it up and haul it away, which ultimately you would have to do. And that's how they recommend you address spills of dielectric fluid in their safety data sheets, is you, you dig it up with the soil, and it goes off and gets dealt with that way. The other attribute of dielectric fluid is that it is insoluble in water. So solubility is important relative to groundwater contamination because we're, we're contaminating groundwater with chemicals. And chemicals that are water soluble, in other words, they dissolve either into or from water. So what happens is, you know, sort of like if you put a teaspoon of salt in a glass of water and mix it up, that salt dissolves. But only so much of that salt dissolves. If you put a lot of salt, it won't all dissolve because there's a maximum amount of solubility for salt in water. With dielectric fluid, it's zero. It's not soluble in water. So if, and it's less dense than water, so it would float on the, if it was put in a pool, the dielectric fluid would float on top of the water. It would not dissolve into the water. It would not release compounds into the water. It could be extracted. So the reason it's not considered a threat to our water supply, groundwater supply, is it's not going to go through the ground. It's going to sit on top of the ground. Even if it, if, if it was there and it happened to be pouring rain, it's not soluble in water. So the wa, the rain is not dissolving it and, and dragging chemi, chemicals down into the groundwater, like I mentioned in a landfill. So it's going to sit on the ground. You can remediate it. And so with the, with the new substations and ones that have been retrofitted here in the last 10 years, where the town is requiring containment, obviously, it's a problem to deal with this because it's got to be cleaned up. The other reason it's not a threat is we've had electricity on the Cape for 100 years or more. I'm not aware of a single instance of any groundwater contamination from a substation failure or spill. So it's not, it's not considered a high risk for these reasons. It's immobility, it's non-solubility, even if it, well, it can't get through the ground to the groundwater. And so that's why it's not, not considered a threat, why it's not regulated in zoning, and why, and I, I believe this as well. I don't, I don't, you know, I don't consider that dielectric fluid is a threat to our groundwater. I think we have far more threats to our groundwater on the Cape from all kinds of things, particularly fuel oil, fuel oil, gasoline. Think about the number of trucks that come onto the Cape every single day, carrying gasoline to service stations, to the airport, the airports. One of those tipping over, being in an accident is far more feasible. One of those tipping over, being in an accident is far more feasible of an occurrence than something happening at a substation. Plus substations are, they're one of the most highly maintained facilities and pieces of infrastructure that we have. For that electric system to work, there has to be dielectric fluid in that system, and they're monitoring that. They're not just, you know, they're not dripping out. If it happens, if there's a spill, they deal with it. If they leak, they repair the equipment. They're looked at constantly. So that's another attribute of that operation that tends to mitigate any environmental hazard. And then finally, if you look at the safety data sheets, all chemicals and manufacturers are required to prepare a safety data sheet which discusses all aspects of this chemical and how it behaves in the environment, whether it's harmful to human health, how firefighters deal with it, if it's flammable. And in that safety data sheet, mineral oil and these dielectric fluids, and particularly the one for Vineyard Wind that I happen to have reviewed most recently, these are considered not an environmental hazard. And as far as human health, they're problematic if you're ingesting the pure product or breathing fumes. And that would not, certainly not be the issue with a groundwater issue. And then finally, mineral oil is not considered a contaminant in the state or federal programs. There is no MCL for mineral oil. Again, primarily for the reasons that I just mentioned, the chemical and physical properties. So I'm going to end there. Hopefully, I didn't go too long. And I'm happy to take any questions. If you want to do questions of me, move to the others, I'll leave it to your pleasure, Madam President.
Thank you for that. Questions from councillors. Council Letky.
Thank you, Dan. That was fantastic. I have a question, and another councillor also asked me about this. And it came up the other night at the CFAC meeting, and I wonder if you could touch on it. It's the idea of mounding because you didn't touch on that at all in your diagram or in your talk, when we're going to put so much water, I don't know if you consider it groundwater, when we finish the completion of the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan and the discharge. Can you talk about that at all and how you're making decisions? Are you still looking at maybe a different discharge location? Or is it all going to discharge at the current site? And what impact will that have on our groundwater?
Sure. So mounding occurs when you put water onto the ground and it goes down into the, down to the water table. And if, you know, rainwater is, you could call that the steady state or the baseline. But when you put more water in, like you would at the wastewater treatment plant or beneath a septic system, you're adding water. What happens is because the water, because of that travel time and the resistance to flow, it doesn't flow as fast as you're putting it in the ground, so it builds up and creates a mound. And so the water table level rises. And so there's an annual water table rise. So in the spring, get a lot of rain, that rain gets down, and the water table rises in the spring. And then during the summer, there's less rain, there's evaporation, the groundwater levels go low. So there's an annual movement of groundwater. Now, sometimes when you have really wet periods, like in my house, and usually in January, when the groundwater is starting to get high and we get a lot of rain, I get water in my basement. And that, and it's, in my case, it's from groundwater, which is not far below my basement, but all that extra water now raises the groundwater, creates a mound, and now it comes into my basement. And so I can't just clean it up because it keeps coming in. It's a source. And so relative to the wastewater treatment plant, where we dispose of our treated effluent over the intersection of Versus Way and Route 28 behind the treatment plant, because for years and years, we're depositing a million gallons a day or more than that in the summer, so there's a mound that's been created beneath the wastewater treatment plant. So groundwater is generally elevated at that location throughout the year because we're putting extra water in. In the summer, where we're treating more because we have more visitors and people living here, we put more water and the groundwater level gets high. So the concern with mounding is, we want to make sure we're not creating problems by flooding streets or flooding basements artificially, not the natural movement, but because we're putting groundwater, putting effluent in the ground, we don't want to create a problem. So our wastewater, Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan includes searing a lot more of the town, so we're going to be treating a lot more wastewater and ultimately disposing of a lot more treated effluent. So one of the things we're going through now and through studies is we're looking at where are we going to dispose and how are we going to dispose of that effluent so we don't create a mound that would impact homes or roads or ponds and lakes because they're also a reflection of the groundwater. So Quocket Lake, all the lakes and ponds we have around here, that's the water table that you see because there's a hole in the ground from the last glatiation and then the water you see. So when the groundwater goes up, pond level goes up. It's the same, it's the same thing. So we're looking at a variety, right, we're doing this right now. We have the funds, the council has appropriated the money, and we have a consultant, CDM Smith. They're one of the premier experts in the nation on this, and we're looking at various ways to deal with our effluent. We're looking at where we may dispose of it, how we may address it once we dispose of it. There's opportunities for putting it in the ground and then removing it down gradient. There is opportunities for reuse, either for irrigation, say, or other purposes, or, so there's non-direct, and then there's direct reuse or potable water reuse, which is becoming more and more necessary in many parts of the world where we're treating our wastewater to such an extent that it's drinkable and it's used as a resource. Because I think the way we're looking at this now, and I think we all need to, this is a resource. Water is an important resource on the Cape, and to just dispose of it and let it go doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. If we could utilize that resource, you know, we need drinking water here. We have a source study looking at new sources, and we're creating drinking water because the level that we're, which we're going to treat the water, particularly if PFAS becomes, and I think it will, a contaminant we have to treat at the treatment plant, the water coming out of there is much cleaner than the groundwater, for sure. So I hope that answers your question, more kind of long-winded. But mounding is an issue. We're dealing with it, and we're not going to, we're not going to create mounding that causes problems. We don't want to do that. The state won't let us do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure, as you go through these studies, that you make it a very public process so people can understand it, the various options that you're looking at?
Absolutely.
Because I'd heard you, there might have been an opportunity to work within municipalities. Or is that still in play? Are we all just dealing within Barnstable? I mean, attaching our sewage systems or effluents or no? Are we now, we're just dealing with our own? Is that?
No, we're definitely having those conversations.
Okay.
We've had them with Yarmouth. We're having them actively with Sandwich and Mashpee.
Okay. No, just, there's a lot of interest in this, so I'm just hoping that as you go through the process, you have opportunities, where you have public presentations of where you are and the studies and the ideas you're looking at.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm a firm believer in that, and I think, you know, we've done that with our construction projects, and we keep doing more and more of that. We've got a communication specialist, Kelly Colopy, that works for us, and she's pushing us to get out there and share our information as much as we can. So, and then if anyone's interested, we're always willing to come out to groups and talk, and we'll be presenting as well to the council all the results of these things, so.
And she's doing a great job, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Question, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, President Penn, and thank you, Dan, for a very comprehensive presentation. Two somewhat unrelated questions. When you speak of the current zoning for protection of Zone 1 and Zone 2, I'm assuming that that's not static, that if we identify other well sources that we would need to put in additional zoning to protect those areas as well?
Well, the overlay would be modified to address those new sources, yes.
Okay.
But the zoning.
We would apply the overlay to other parts of the map, so, great.
Exactly.
The other issue is, I mean, there's obviously a lot of layers of protection from the federal to the state to the local for those of us who receive our drinking water from a, you know, common or a collective source. But we still have a lot of residents in our town that are on private wells, and I was on a private well for years, abutting several cranberry bogs. And I just sometimes wonder what protections are available for our private, I mean, our residents who are on private wells.
Well, I think it's important that people that have private wells test them, and I know they don't all do that. Certainly, a recommendation that the state and our own Board of Health, as well as, you know, myself, is that we should, people who have private wells should be testing them because that water's coming from their own property. But as we have learned, that water beneath their own property came from somewhere, and it may have come from the horse farm next door or the neighbor's septic system that's close. And so it's important to know what's in your drinking water, and that's one of the benefits of a public water supply is it's tested so frequently. We know exactly what's in it. And knowing what's in private water systems, sometimes people have to get treatment on their own, and sometimes they have to ultimately go to a public system like they had to do in Wellfleet and Eastham because there was so much contamination that was showing up in private wells. The zoning, you know, the zoning is not, does not address this. And that's a difficult one because you're actually, it's a home. So you're one of the land uses we're trying to regulate to protect our water. Fortunately, I think a lot of the tests that I've seen in West Barnstable in particular is that, you know, much of that water is good, and we've actually sponsored some of that testing in the past. And the county health department has also provided testing, free testing, and overall excellent, excellent water quality and didn't identify problems. So I think in West Barnstable, there's not a lot of the type of uses that create groundwater contamination, other than the residential uses, or even if it's a farm, that might be nutrients as well and nitrogen or nitrate in the drinking water, which in high doses can be harmful to very young babies, and you'd want to know that. But in general, it's not an extremely problematic issue other than that, but.
So the testing that the public can get either through the, it's mostly through the county, right?
Right.
Does that cover the range of the testing that our municipal water supplies do, or, I mean?
No.
No.
But it covers the primary contaminants, the things that you might expect. And you can get PFAS added onto that. And I don't have the details of the cost, but I know that they can facilitate that for homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Starr.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santos. So do you think at some point, excuse me, that all the water on Cape Cod will have to be treated? I mean, it seems like PFAS is showing up just in the background.
My opinion is yes.
Okay.
For that reason.
Yeah.
Everywhere we've looked in the past few years, we've found PFAS. And with the levels of PFAS that are being regulated dropping, I can't see how we avoid treatment of all the water supplies.
One other question. So if somebody said, this statement says extremely toxic dielectric fluids, so extremely toxic, you probably wouldn't agree with that.
I don't agree with that. The data doesn't suggest that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Tamish.
You talked about groundwater overlay protection districts. Does that just cover actual sources of water or potential? For example, Bridge Creek has been talked about as being a potentially a source of water for either West Barnstable or Hyannis. Is that protected at all, other than the fact that it's protected land?
Not by that zoning overlay, no.
Okay.
But it would be once it became.
Once it actually becomes a water source. And second, is saltwater intrusion a concern? I mean, you're doing a lot of pumping between our districts and Sandwich, Mashpee, et cetera.
We don't see it here. In some places it is where wells are either closer to the saltwater source or the aquifer is thin. Ours is thick, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of fresh water there. Or if you're overpumping and you see that out west a lot, I mean, we're blessed with a vast quantity of water on the Cape. I mean, we want to protect it and it has to be treated, but we're not going to run out of water like other parts of the country, literally are out of water. And that's a problem we won't ever face, and we don't want to have because that's not an easy one to solve. But primarily because of overpumping, you start to get these saltwater intrusion issues. But we don't, DEP controls that quite a bit, and they make sure that we're withdrawing water safely and that we're not going to draw in saltwater, we're not going to lower pond levels, you know, we're not going to affect the streams or other wells. So it's a fine dance that they have to figure out whenever we put a new source in to make sure that we're not compromising other things.
Thank you. Councilor Blum.
You just mentioned there was some water was tested in West Barnstable. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes. Was PFAS part of that testing?
No, it was actually prior to PFAS being an issue.
Okay. How about from the other water commissioners other than Hyannis, because we know we have a problem in Hyannis, you know? Are there problems with PFAS in the other villages?
Well, I'll let them address that. They're going to speak, so.
Okay. We'll wait on the answer to that question. You also mentioned, you know, there may be a need for dealing with this mounding issue, right? Do you have the infrastructure to deal with the mounding issue? Or will that be something you'll need to come before the council to allocate funds?
Well, what, the funds that we will need or appropriations will be for whatever infrastructure that we're creating to treat and dispose of our wastewater, so, or the effluent when it's treated. So we're not going to create a mounding problem that then has to be mitigated. The goal of the studies now is to not have a mounding problem, is to manage our treatment and disposal so that we don't create that situation where we're.
What kind of an infrastructure would it, what would it look like if mounding were to become a problem? I mean, we have a lot of density in, you know, being proposed in Hyannis, and I'm pretty sure that in that corridor out toward Catuit, you know, the Route 28 corridor, that there's going to be a lot of density projects in, because of the sewer that's going to be going there. I mean, do you think that all that density is going to create more of a mounding issue?
Well, where we're putting the sewer. Well, where we're putting the sewer, along Route 28 and down towards Katuwet, that's all going to be brought back to Hyannis and treated at the treatment plant here. So we're not creating, it wouldn't be a mounding situation out there. The mounding is wherever we choose to dispose of the treated wastewater, potentially.
So there, I mean, there's even more of a chance of mounding than the water being released from the, from the Hyannis treatment facility, right?
It's not a matter of chance. We're going to have a known quantity of water, and through our study and modeling, we know how high it raises the groundwater, and we're not going to design and build a system that raises groundwater to the point where it becomes a problem. So we're just not going to do that. We're going to have either other locations for disposal that wouldn't necessarily be at our treatment plant, they could be at other town properties, or we're going to use the water in a different manner, so...
So would that require additional infrastructure?
No.
Okay.
No.
Good. You mentioned that mineral oil is 50% more viscous than water, and it's insoluble in water. And yet, we have other people in that it's not a dangerous toxin. But we have other people in the community, including doctors, you know, saying that it is a dangerous thing. I mean, can we, can we solve this issue once and for all?
I don't know.
Can we have a demonstration, for instance? You know, just take a chunk of land and pour, pour the stuff on it, and see how, if it...
I don't think we need to do that, because we know...
I think we do need to do it, because people are not accepting what you're saying.
I don't know where they're getting their information. I'm providing you with factual information based on documents.
I know you are, but I think you need a little PR in that area.
I...
There's a lot of people out there who don't believe you.
Well, they can...
I believe you.
Well, they can do the same research that I've done, and find the same things that I've done, and use the material I put here, and see the safety data sheets. If they, if they're trying to educate themselves on the reality of the threat of a transformer station or dielectric fluid, the information is available.
These people are worried about their drinking water.
I totally understand that.
You know, they, they are worried, and they need to be assured. And I think it's our responsibility to assure them.
One reason...
How can we do that?
And one of the reasons I'm here was for that very purpose, was to share with you what the people that are charged with...
They're not really telling us anything that we haven't heard already, though, if, if we are the people that, you know, are concerned about our drinking water. We heard this already, you know, and, and this, this doesn't build confidence in, with the people who need to be targeted. They're, they're not, they're not hearing enough from, from us, from the town. It's not just you, it's the town.
Right.
The town needs to build some sort of bridge between, you know, us and the, and the people who don't, don't believe it.
So Charlie, Counsel Bloom, if I might interject. So what you're suggesting is a foolproof demonstration at some point in time? That's what you're suggesting?
I don't know if it would be foolproof, but, you know, just...
That's what you're asking for.
Some demonstration. I mean, it would, I would, I would love to see it, you know, a big chunk of, you know, grass from somewhere, I don't know. It seems silly, but I would like to see it. Will, will the, will the mineral oil, will the dielectric fluid, will it, will it stay on the surface, or will it sink in? I mean, it's obviously, obviously going to have to be a big chunk of land, but, you know, maybe if people saw that, and they saw the pooling of the dielectric fluid on the top, that it's not sinking through the soil, maybe they would believe it. But, you know, I don't want to get, get too far into that. I'll just leave it, leave it as, as it is right there, because I do have a couple of other questions, too. I'm just curious. What happens to the contaminated material from the county fire department site? You know, what happened to it? What do they do with it? Do they burn it?
They took it over the bridge.
Yeah. They took it over the bridge. What do they do with it?
What material are you talking about?
The material, the PFAS contaminated material from the county firesite. PFAS contaminated material, they took tons of it away.
Oh, the soil.
Yeah, the soil. Yeah. What do they do with it?
It's, it's either landfilled in licensed landfills out of state, or, I'm not sure if that was incinerated. I don't know exactly what it was, but it was hauled, removed, hauled away off state, out of state.
So incinerating it can kind of clean it out?
I think it depends what the levels are, depends what the particular PFAS chemicals are. I don't know specifically what they did with that material. I could find out easy enough.
No, no, no. I'm just wondering, you know, what, not, not where they put it, but, you know, what happens to that stuff?
Yeah. I think generally, it's put in a landfill that is lined and monitored, and that's one reason why a lot of the PFAS today is capped rather than removed.
Okay, speaking about capped, what's the status of the PFAS contamination at the airport? How come nothing's being done about that?
It's, it's totally been resolved. They've capped their...
Capping it?
They've capped their area, and, and we, we know what's in the groundwater, and how it's affecting our MAR well system. And the airport will be providing funds to offset the costs of the treatment for that material. But they have, as far as the state's concerned, that cap is considered a permanent remediation of that site.
So where is that water, where is that contaminated water being treated?
At our MAR, yeah, we have a treatment system there that we finished just a couple of years ago, and it's advanced treatment. And any PFAS in the water is removed, and there is no detection at all in our water supply there.
We got, we got a bunch of money from the county for, you know, for, for that site out there, the county firefighters. Has the airport given us any money to help us with? I don't know. I'm just asking the question. Has the airport given us any money to help pay for the, the cost? It's, it's an enormous cost.
At the next town council meeting, there will be an item on the agenda, which is an appropriation by the airport to provide funds towards that MAR treatment system.
Great, that's great. That's good to hear. When you, when you pump out water from the ground, the water table, is there PFAS left in the soil underneath there, in the sand and the gravel? Does it, does it stick to the sand and gravel, or, you know, what happens to it?
So generally, the PFAS that's in the water comes from a source area. So say the fire, the training academy. So there was spills, and the foam was put there. So the soils are contaminated at that site. Rainwater goes through there, picks up the PFAS, because it's soluble in water, and then it moves with the water to the well site. So it's not actually contaminating the soil as it goes along. That's water that's staying in solution and then gets drawn out by the well.
Okay. So then, if the PFAS in the, is not sticking to anything, which is, you know, one of the reasons why they, they developed it, I imagine, because it wouldn't stick. But is it sticking to our, the insides of our, our water pipes or conduits?
It's not in our water system.
I mean...
And so, just to explain...
It had been.
Its, its properties for nonstick, say, that's in the pure, pure form. What we're talking about in the water is parts per billion, or nanograms per liter. So it's in solution. It's not, it's, it's such a miniscule.
I am saturated in five or six types, totally saturated. I'm talking about above 75%, you know. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about PFAS, as you can imagine. You know, there was a nice article in the paper today, Counselor Lutke's family, you know, took, did the tests, the same tests that I did. But, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm just curious. I'm asking questions...
We're going to have a special, we're going to have a special meeting on this, just like this one, on that specific subject.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Yeah, that'll be...
So, pipes then, no reason to be concerned about PFAS in the pipes, either in, in the material that these pipes are made of, or, you know, maybe from old, I mean, I'm saturated for a reason. Water must have flown through those pipes, you know, and, and...
But if it was on the pipe, or, as you say, then, and it would be getting in the water, then we'd find it, because we sample. So there's, there's no PFAS currently in our water system.
Good to hear. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me see, I wrote a bunch of questions here. So we test for, what, five, six, seven types of PFAS?
Forty.
Forty types?
The state regulates six.
And the forty, that's a lot. That's a lot more than I thought. And the water's coming out clean?
Yes.
So I, I understand that there's, you know, something like 15,000 types of PFAS. Do you think that the carbon is doing a good job of, even though we don't measure for that stuff, is doing a good job taking that stuff out of the water, too?
I do, but it's hard...
If it's in there, you know, maybe...
Right. What I know is that it's removing the ones that are regulated, and that we're required to remove. Like you say, 15,000 others. There may be other things in there that aren't being regulated, that we're not even testing for. So it's, I can't really respond to that. We're doing, we're doing what we're required to do for the contaminants that have been identified as problematic.
I was interested in your response to, the question is, do we think that all Cape Cod water will eventually be, need to be treated with PFAS? And that's, it's sort of shocking to hear you say that, yes, it's, it's, it's true. It kind of alarms me, you know, that...
Yeah, understood. But if you think about it, we live on top of our water supply. Not like we have areas out that no one's, there's no land use issues, there's no one's touching, no one's driving on, that's protected just for water. We live on top of our water supply. So everything we do potentially affects and threatens that water supply, from our own homes, our medicines that get flushed down the toilet, and things through our bodies, through all the activities, gas stations, and just everything that is in our contemporary life. Many of those things are, can be threats to water supply, and because we live on, on that water supply, and we've had a history of realizing that we've contaminated our groundwater by these uses. This has only been known in the last 40 or 50 years, really. Prior to that, and that's why so much of the groundwater is contaminated, they had no idea that we were contaminating the groundwater. I spent a lot of time out at the military base, where they had lots of cesspools and sumps, and the way to get rid of things was you just drain it like in a cesspool. Floor drain out to the drain, it's gone.
Oh, yeah.
Where did it go? Went into our groundwater. They didn't realize that then. We know a lot better now.
One more question. There was an interesting map that you showed, the different...
Charlie, will you speak into the mic for the public?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm sorry about that. There was an interesting map that you showed before about, do you remember those maps you had of the dome, the domes?
Yeah.
Could you go back to one of, once, those I...
The one that didn't show up too well, or these?
Okay. The, the one that you just flicked by, the next one. Yeah, right there, right there.
Okay.
Okay. So the yellow areas are, are what?
Those are the Zone 2s for all the public water supply wells in Barnstable.
Okay. And the white areas?
Just land.
That's, it's not Zone 2. So it's those, the white areas are areas that don't contribute water to our well sites.
Where is the, the West Barnstable substation being built? Is it in a Zone 1 or a Zone 2 area?
It's not in a Zone 1. I, I, this map is not such that I can really...
Well, I'll tell you what I think. You know, and I'm, I'm not a hydrologist, or a geologist, or anything, but I don't think we should be building substations over Zone 1 or Zone 2 areas. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
You're welcome. Counselor Mendez?
Thank you, President Penn, and thank you, Dan. Just some really simple questions. What's been more detrimental to our groundwater, dielectric fluid or aerosols?
What do you mean by...
More detrimental.
What do you mean by aerosols?
Hairspray, lysol, stuff people use in their houses every day.
Well, yeah, those things, if they get into the septic system, then they would eventually get into the groundwater.
So aerosols. What's been more detrimental to our water system? Fertilizer or dielectric fluid?
Oh, fertilizer.
Okay. What's been more detrimental to us, to our water system? Gasoline or dielectric fluid?
Gasoline.
Okay. So the point I'm making is that if we're concerned about our water system, then it's in our power to do something in our water system. That's the point I'm making. You know, we can sit here and try to carry a narrative, we can sit here and argue about things that really not a lot of us know about. But there are things we can do to help our water system. One more question. What's more detrimental to our water system? Teflon or dielectric fluid?
I would say Teflon.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Crowe?
Thank you, President Penn. Dan, thank you for your time and that presentation. I appreciate it. I just have a couple of questions for you. As we expand our water, our sewage throughout the Cape, mostly going to the west side, that's going to bring a lot more effluent into the facility we have here on Beers Way. What are the plans, is there, are there plans to expand that facility with the actual new, larger amount of, of water that's coming in there, or?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
Okay. I assume this will, the amount of water, once it's all put together, is quite, quite a lot. It's like another third, or another half, whatever that amount is. So that, that facility will expand accordingly?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have, it goes back to dielectric fluid. What happens when dielectric fluid burns?
I don't know myself.
What are the, what are the hazards of that?
Well, it's a flammable material, so, I imagine.
Yeah, we're talking groundwater, so, I mean, I think that's a little off-subject.
Okay.
Okay.
Good enough. Thanks.
Anybody else have any other question, follow-up, before we get to the public's questions that he might read?
Just a real quick question. Since this is, you're such a great resource, and the education has been great for all of us, could you just speak a minute to the fact that when we cover or cap like a landfill, what we're really doing is preventing any additional water from hitting those, whatever tox... toxic mixes in that landfill, and then, then further contaminating our groundwater, so we're really protecting any further contamination? Is that the principle?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sealing it off.
And that's sort of what we're, we've done with the PFAS at the airport as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You can't, you can't remove what contamination has already occurred, but you can prevent additional contamination from entering the groundwater. Assuming before we capped it, there was stuff that leached.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Lutkey?
Yeah, just a follow-up on the effluent. You spoke earlier, Dan, that you have federal regulations, and you have state, and state can trump federal, and I guess that's where it stops. There's no municipal regulations. You've said very clearly that you only do what you have to do per the regulations. Is that correct? Do you have any municipal regulations that you go by?
Well, we have zoning.
You have zoning. But here's my point, because you've talked about, and I know Mr. Ellis has talked about it too, the whole, the whole idea that perhaps this effluent will be treated to the point of drinking water.
Oh, I see, okay.
And that's, that's what I'm getting at. And that seems to be at some future point, which that point is hard for me to comprehend how that's being defined, if it's true that we have to adhere to state and federal standards. So, my question is, if we know this PFAS is ubiquitous, and we know we're continuing to put it out in our effluent into the groundwater, why don't we get ahead of it and start treating that now? Why don't we filter? If we have the technology to filter the groundwater at the wells, why can't we apply that same technology now and do that at the effluent point, so we don't keep contaminating our water? Is it because you don't have to? I mean, when, when is this nebulous point that you're gonna be at drinking water sta... I'm just trying to understand what we're waiting for, when, when this all happens?
You're right, we're not, we're not regulated by the state to treat for PFAS at our wastewater treatment plant. Could we? Certainly. That would be a policy decision that you all would make. But, but we generally don't, as the administrators of these programs suggests, would suggest that. We're generally trying to meet the standards, comply with the law, and, but we can be more stringent with zoning, with, with our treatment, certainly.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, because as you talked about with this mounding issue, that you certainly would not go out of your way to create a mounding situation, that you then have to remediate. You know, if you are looking at these various solutions, one of them may be being drinking water quality, wouldn't that have to be approved by state or federal entities? Or would that be a municipal decision?
Oh, certainly would. They'd have to approve it ultimately.
But you are gonna bring that forward.
Right.
So, we could, as you said, we, as a town council, could look at a policy, that we could do something in the interim.
Right, and if we were to the point, and we're not there yet, where we wanted to recommend that we were going to use the treated effluent for drinking water, well, we wouldn't wait for the state to decide that it's gonna regulate PFAS, we would obviously, because it's regulated now in our drinking water, if it was gonna be drinking water, then we would have to remove it.
Right. I'm just, I'm just curious the timeline here, because if we are going to achieve this, why wouldn't we achieve it now, rather than wait for thirty years, or something? You know what I'm saying? Why wouldn't we do it now?
Right. Well, we, we're looking at it now, and we're really, need to have solutions in place probably by 2030 on this issue. The end of Phase 1.
Okay. Again, I really look forward to the public engagement on this, to understand, you know, our motivations, you know, what we're doing, you know, how we're being regulated, and, you know, what the options are, that, what would be the value in, in waiting if we could do this now? And then, it's already in place when we have more flow coming, but whatever. Thank you.
Councillor Mendez?
Thank you, President Penn. One more thing. Can you quickly talk about how PFAS, just as in the Cape Cod problem, half the country's drinking water has PFAS? And also, if I remember correctly, because I know we've talked about this a couple of times, how we're actually ahead of the curve of the rest of the country at treating PFAS? Because, you know, people get a lot of bad information about what's going on in town, and about how the town isn't doing this and doing that, when we're actually, the lead isn't treating this stuff. So, can you just expound on that a little bit?
Sure. You said it very well yourself. It is a national problem, it's a worldwide problem. And where there's been, primarily where there's been military bases, airports, these have been the most concentrated uses of PFAS foams, where they have groundwater contamination, but it's showing up, as it has on the Cape, in just general groundwater through the use of septic systems and wastewater treatment plants. It's a, every state in the Union is wrestling with creating standards now, based on the EPA's work, in regulating this, because it is a problem in every state in the Union. We, in Hyannis, addressed this when it first came out in 2015, when the EPA put out a health advisory. Now, the health advisory is just that, and the health advisories are to residents, it's not to the town. It's to residents saying, if your water has PFAS in it, you might want to think about not drinking it, because it's looking like it could be a health problem. But in Hyannis, we took that, and we said, we're gonna deal with this now, before it's regulated, just like you're saying, Councillor Lutkey. Before we had to, we recognized this is not something we want in our water. We shut down the wells that had PFAS in them, and we, on an emergency basis, put carbon filtration systems on those wells within a matter of months, and then brought them, brought them online. And we did this before really anyone, in, if not the country, certainly in Massachusetts, if not the country. And many systems are still wrestling with how to do this, and haven't even done it yet, and there, there is PFAS in water systems in Massachusetts. So, yes, I, you know, I'm proud of the work we did to get Hyannis on a treated system and have no detection of PFAS in that system, and it's been that way, and will continue to be that way.
I wanted to thank you and the staff for being forward-thinking, because as I said, a lot of people, including myself, before I sat on this council, were very uneducated about it. And, you know, like I said, it's easy to complain, but you have to also give credit to a town that is on the forefront of something. This is a new problem. Well, no problem that's being wrestled with now. It's a new problem for the whole country, not just us. But I think we should sleep a little bit easier, knowing that we're on the forefront of fighting this problem, and that our town has been very proactive in fighting PFAS. It took hundreds of years to get here, it's not gonna go away overnight.
Thank you, Councillor Mendez. Mr. Town Manager, wait a minute. Are you, are you talking on this particular issue, or?
Good evening, Markell's Town Manager, only if you allow me to.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you all, councillors, for taking the time to have this discussion. Having stood where Dan was just standing and listening to some of the questions, I felt like I had to come up, and certainly, you know, I guess I may have said what councillor Mendez just said. You know, when we, to councillor Lutkey's comments, Barnstable and its wastewater treatment plan has been ahead of the curve, and looked at as a model in Massachusetts for decades. You know, we made the decision when nitrogen was the focus, and we were only being regulated by the state to ten parts per million removal, to go beyond. Now, you just can't do that. You have to have DEP agree to it, because they give us our groundwater discharge permit, and we put in place some innovative technologies to be able to achieve that, and we've been doing that for almost two decades. The work that Dan Santos has done in looking at our, with Hans, Hans is sitting in the back of the room, and I know a member of our Hyannis Water Board, or the Barnstable Water Supply Board is here, but the work that they've done in looking at how to use the water that will leave that plant in the future, given the challenges that the groundwater on Cape Cod has, is looked at nationwide for being ahead of any regulations. The challenge, though, is that you don't always have the example. When you're first, sometimes there's, you can't anticipate everything. I mean, certainly, we know that with wind. You can't anticipate everything. You don't have necessarily that financial model, or that regulatory example, to be able to achieve what you've said. But I just wanted to come up to reassure the public that we're way out in front on these issues of water reuse, and understanding our drinking water supplies, and working with the people in this room to make sure we do everything to protect it. So, I just wanted to come up and share that with you. The one thing, well, PFAS, if Matt Levesque were here, he would laugh at me. PFAS doesn't just come from point sources, like a fire foam. PFAS is in your wrinkle-resistant shirt, it's in many of the cleaning products you use in your home, it's in teflon pans, it's in microwavable popcorn, it's in the plastic-like paper that wraps a hamburger that you buy at a fast food place. So, this isn't only coming into, and it's not regulated. It's not at, I forget what the standard is, you know, .06 trillion, you know, you know, in the drinking water. It's at much, much higher concentrations in those sources, I've said, and those are just a short list of things that we use every day in our homes. So, when I hear, so many residents have called me since we did the study in Hyannis, and I say to them, have you done an audit in your house? Do you know what you're using? Have you gotten rid of your teflon pans? Have you gotten rid of products that, from a commercial standpoint, are not regulated and you buy every day that contain PFAS? Because on the water supply side, what our DPW has done, again, is certainly a statewide model for addressing PFAS, and it's non-detect in the Hyannis system. So, I would just say that, so our listening public knows that, and certainly, go online, and, don't believe me, go online and look this up, the same as questions on other chemicals. And if you want to bring a third-party expert in, I know we're gonna have a future meeting, on any subject, on any chemical, let's do it. Let's do it. But DPW's doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Dan, did you want to address any questions from the public?
You know, I think we've addressed them through your questions.
Okay.
There weren't that many questions that came in. Most of the ones that came in were related to wind and other issues that we'd get at other meetings.
Okay.
There was a question regarding protecting future water supplies, and I addressed that through the CPC and the land bank, that we have an active program of looking at property for water supply protection, and I've spent that money to do that, so yes, we're doing that. It was an interesting question about, does the water districts have independent citizens groups working with town employees? Well, I guess my response to that is that the water districts are overseen by citizens. Water commissioners are citizens, they're not employees, and so, yes, absolutely, independent citizens are working with the purveyors to manage and oversee these systems. Then there was a question about why the local water commissioners and superintendents, why weren't they brought into the process prior to this meeting tonight? Well, they, they've been involved in the process. They're independent agencies that have the ability to be involved to the extent they want to, but we communicate with them regularly. Just tonight, we're bringing them all in one room because of your suggestion that it made sense to educate the council and the public about, in one place, town-wide, how we're looking at this. And, you know, my charge as the Public Works Director is to make sure that I'm considering water resources and water supply town-wide, even though those systems are run by separate entities, I'm responsible for coordinating and making sure that, town-wide, the resource is, is protected, and that we work together. And we've had meetings, and we'll continue to do that into the future, and, as I've said at many public meetings, we want to collaborate, to whatever extent makes sense, on water supply, and particularly on contamination issues, and particularly with PFAS, which is very expensive. And are there opportunities for collaboration that would save everyone money in the long run? So, I think everyone's open to that.
Yep.
So, that was really addressing the questions.
And before, thank you for that. Before we sit down, would you explain, because I think the public, I always hear this all the time, time that they're on town water, and they want to know, why isn't the town doing this, and the town doing that? And we have separate, as you just said, and they're all sitting here, water districts, who are their own entities, and so when people say, why didn't the town do X, Y, Z, I want, I just want everybody to know that the water districts are not part of the town, they're like private water companies. Maybe that's not the right words, but could you explain that from your perspective, and then, you guys, when you're coming up shortly, can explain it from your perspective? That'd be great.
Sure.
Just, just for clarification, please.
In Massachusetts, there are two types of government, really, or three. There are cities, towns, and special districts. And these are municipal governments, and the water and fire districts are part of these special districts under state law, which allows them to be autonomous and to raise revenue through taxes. And these were set up in the 1920s primarily, and I know they can all speak to this more specifically for each of them, but generally in the 1920s. And that's when, Barnstable's a big town, and Catuat was way out there, and Barnstable Village, and so, it made sense to have a fire department, because it was village-centric. They weren't, we weren't spread out like we are now. So, there's a little fire department, took care of Barnstable Village. So, they made them a municipal entity, so they could raise revenue via taxes, and Catuat, and Centerville, Osserville, Marston's Mills, and Hyannis. And so, that's how that started, and it's been that way ever since. And water and fire are connected naturally, because you need water to put out fires, and so, some of the earliest water systems weren't for drinking water, it was for firewater, for fire flow, and that was the primary reason for the water system, not, not for drinking water. You could put a well in for your water if you needed that. So, that's why we have these districts, that's why they're autonomous, and each run their own program. It gets a little cumbersome sometimes, and it's not the easiest system to work with, but it's, it's what we have, it's our government.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to move right in. I'm gonna take, I guess you guys decided that you wanted to sit there, and as you speak to us, you'll come up to the table, you don't all want to come up at the same time, there's probably not enough room. But I want to read some comments. We're gonna start with Centerville, Osserville, Marston's Mills, Com Water Commissioner, Craig Crocker, Commissioner, but as he's getting ready to do what he's gonna do, I wanted to read some comments. People have asked me, and thank you for all the citizens that have contacted me directly and asked me, why isn't BFD, Barnstable Fire District, invited to this? Well, they were invited to this, but unfortunately, they have a scheduling conflict, so I want to read a statement from Sean Anderson, who's, and this is from the Board of Water Commissioners. Barnstable Fire District Water Department... Barnstable Fire District Water Department has been and will continue to work vigilantly regarding source water protection. To quote Mass DEP from the Source Water Assessment Program Report, we saw reference to that from Mr. Santos recently, for the water supplies serving Barnstable and Fire District, he's quoting from the report here. "The SWAP report assesses the susceptibility of Barnstable water supplies to potential contamination from uses and activities within the recharge area. The district owns the land adjacent to our wells and restricts any activities that could potentially contaminate them. This water system has enacted numerous drinking water protection measures recommended by Mass DEP," end of quote. So this shows the commitment that Barnstable Fire District Water District has to source water protection. End of comments. I just wanted that read into the record so you know that they're represented here, and we're sorry they couldn't be here tonight, but thank you for those comments. Mr. Crocker. Make sure your button, is your green light on?
Yep.
Excellent.
There you go.
Thank you.
Craig Crocker, Water Superintendent, Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I do have a fact sheet here. I don't know if it was okay to hand this out to them or...
Sure. More information, the better.
It just kind of gives us stats that we have for the past 2023 and what we've pumped and our facilities and kind of what we do. Service connections and miles of main. But I was going to address the three things that you brought up in your, in the email as far as infrastructure, capacity, and future needs.
Great.
I can run through those real quick, and you can fire questions at me after that. But as far as the infrastructure for Calm, our tanks, our wells, our pumping and treatment facilities, all in excellent condition. State-of-the-art, and they're well-maintained by our staff. The water piping is in good condition. We do have some areas that are still unlined cast iron piping, the water mains. They're approaching their end of their useful life. There's some of the areas that were, you know, the original areas in Centerville and Osterville mostly. We do have an ongoing water system improvement plan to address those, and we try to get rid of those mains or replace them. As the town resurfaces the road, we hope to, we work in coordination with them, and they're great about that as far as communication. Capacity-wise, I'm going to break that into two areas. Really, pumping capacity is probably the more important one. We're, capacity's excellent as far as our pumps in meeting demand for 10 months of the year. July and August are a challenge, but we maintain our equipment top-notch, so we don't have any failures in the July and August area where the public would have to, you know, implement water bans or we'd ask them to conserve. Our water supply is also excellent. All the wells were sited and engineered into areas where the, where it was, we can max out and get a maximum amount of water out of it and not have any impacts to the wetlands or environmentally sensitive areas. We call that the recharge or the recover. After they pump to meet those prolonged demand, peak demand periods, they up well and they recharge within hours. Our future needs. We, our past planning has Calm in excellent shape as far as meeting future needs. We did an extensive test well program investigation and identified parcels that could support new wells. Majority of those parcels that we identified were already in public control by, either with our property that we own or within the town, what they own. So we, the initial investigations identified it and said that it could possibly hold a well on a couple of those parcels. We do have one parcel that we're working with the town land bank committee to try to get ownership of that as well. So that Lindsay Council's been very helpful in trying to get that project going and try to get that parcel in our control. We feel that it could have a very strong production value for us. We're also working with them on, as far as protecting the existing wells, buying more property, any vacant land around those wells so we can further protect some of the wells out there. You can tell we have about 662 acres of watershed property that we have in our control now. And as far as the water supply protection efforts, I think Dan covered most of that. That's mainly through the board of health and the town efforts, but we've worked for decades with them as far as getting the Zone 2 and getting that approved by the state and all the requirements for that. So that has been met. And that's it. I think I'll take your questions or anything you have for me.
Sounds like you're in really good shape, good for you, other than those initial pipes which you're getting to.
Yeah.
Council Lucky.
Yeah, thank you for that. Just a question, you said your pipes are getting to the end of their useful life. What will that do to your ratepayers? And how is that, how will that be received? What do you think that's, the amount will be, or how is that going to affect?
Well...
And the timeframe? How do you see that unfolding?
The ratepayers, we will be adjusting the rates in the next, this year or probably next year. We're still working on having that rate study completed and making sure that we can meet those needs. So we're looking at a modest adjustment for our ratepayers, probably, it might even be later this year or into the next year, 2025.
And do you do the methodology where those who use above what you consider a reasonable amount, do they pay a surcharge when they go over that amount? Or has everybody had a flat rate regardless of usage?
No, we have a three-tiered system that takes care of that. People that use more will pay more.
Any other questions? No? Council Tamish.
Mr. Crocker, a couple of things. One, I've lived in Calm Fire Water most of my life, and I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
One of the issues that's been raised, questions have been raised, was about the involvement of specific, I would assume, Calm Water in planning and knowledge of the installation of the wind farm and, you know, questions about whether they were consulted. Could you address that? I mean, was the water department and the fire district involved with the implementation of either Vineyard Wind or potentially Park City Wind?
The, our involvement depended, was impacted by their bringing the cables in the roads. So that, those cables and the amount of room in the roads required them to relay new water mains along that stretch, that whole stretch from Colville's Beach up to, on Finney's Lane, up to Longview where the district ends, basically, you call it Route 132 up in that area. So they had to install new water mains, move them over, insulate them. That's really all the input we had with, is working out a plan to design the new water main. And they had to do it to our specs and guidance, but that was it.
Okay. Another issue that's been brought up is the question of the generation of heat from the electric cables in close proximity to the piping. Do you see that as an issue?
With the Vineyard Wind one, the thermal analysis didn't associate any issues, but we did install insulation around it, so that would take care of it. The Park City one, we're in discussions with them now and looking at the thermal analysis with that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council Schnep. And thank you.
Just following up on...
Check your mic.
Just following up on Vice President Tamish's questions on the impact of the wind projects, and actually, Council Lucky's concern about, you know, replacement of various pipes. Is there any intersection that some of the piping that has to be replaced because of the roadwork might be some of the older mains, or is it that it's...
There was quite a bit on Strawberry Hill Road, Crayville Beach Road. So that was a benefit to the residents and the ratepayers of Calm to have that old piping removed, yes.
And did Vineyard Wind pay for that replacement?
Yes, they did.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No. Yes, Council Mendez.
Thank you for coming in. Responding on what the other council spoke about, when Vineyard Wind replaced those old pipes, what did it save the taxpayers?
It's, they've replaced, I want to say about, I want to say about 8,000 feet. So it just, it was a substantial savings to the ratepayers, definitely.
Just a guesstimate.
It's probably close to $6 to $8 million, I would guess.
Okay, thank you.
All set. Okay. I guess we're good. I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next, we're going to hear from Ktowit. We have Mark Robinson and Chris Wiseman, Superintendent and Commissioner, working together.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark Robinson, a Water Commissioner from Ktowit.
And thank you for the presentation.
Oh, we have some slides, we do.
You do?
Yeah. And with me is Chris Wiseman, our Superintendent. Chris has been with the department for over 35 years, and I think that's really a tribute to his dedication. I say that he's got a tough job. He has to put his head down on his pillow every night worrying about the health and safety of the water supply for thousands of people. And it's not an easy job, and it's really underappreciated. And so we're from the small, little district of Ktowit, way out in the West. And just to go through these very quickly, I know it's late. The water department was established about 90 years ago, and we have an office on Route 28. We have three elected water commissioners. We set the rates, and so that's a big responsibility for the elected commissioners. We have staff of four right now, five with the new junior operator, and a budget of about $850,000 a year. And we fund that primarily through our water revenues. We could also rely on the district tax. We've tried to get away from that and be more self-funding in recent years. We have a small well field, 244 acres, and five, four different sites. The major one is south of Route 28, as you see there. And we have about 23, 50 households. We have 53 miles of water mains next. And Dan did a great job of explaining how the water flows, and Ktowit flows northwest to southeast, headed towards our wells. Interestingly, we actually are drawing water from as far away as Sandwich and Mashpee because of the length of the Zone 2s affecting our five wells. And we have no water quality issues. We do issue with the confidence report every year. It comes out in the spring. Presently, we do no treatment. We only do corrosion control, which is kind of unique to it, and was actually developed as something that...
We also disinfect.
And disinfection, of course, yeah. But next, Dan's covered a lot of that, so we can keep going. And I think what's, a couple of things that are unique in Ktowit is that in the last few years, we've been very concerned about the over-pumping of the small amount of wellfields that we have. And so we've really tried to address this, you know, voluntary conservation is always is good, but we're trying to use the laws of supply and demand as well. So here you see our water rates. There's a number of different tiers. We talked about the gradation of the tiers. So everybody pays a small amount for the initial amount of water to run a household. And then if they want to get involved with swimming pools and irrigation, we've been trying to wean them off the public water supply to do that and encouraging them to install private wells. And we've, just in the last three years, we've had 82 new wells installed on private properties next. And this has had a great effect of reducing that summer demand that Superintendent Crocker was talking about, the July and August. You can see here on the graph, the peaks, it's really a June, July, August, September thing for us. Every year, it has that same bell curve. Obviously, this time of year, less people around, less irrigation. And so that was a very, very important thing for us, the pumping of the wells during the summer, just pounding and pounding and pounding from 4:00 AM to 8:00 AM to try to keep the tanks filled, as is being sucked down to spread the very expensive water supply on people's lawns. So I really applaud the residents of Ktowit who have made this effort to install private irrigation wells and reduce that demand on the water supply. And I think we'll all be better off with that, spreading out the supply next. In terms of future needs and concerns, we are doing a number of studies using test wells to monitor groundwater flow and kind of refining our Zone 2 to be a real planning area. We've identified septic systems in dense neighborhoods just up gradient, very close to the well field, the main well field, that we'd like to work with them over time as septic system upgrades become available. We might encourage more of that because it's so close to our well field around Route 28 primarily. We don't see this town sewer reaching out into Ktowit into the next 20, 30 years even. So we're going to have to rely on septic system upgrades. And we're not sure. What are we going to do about treatment? I think the carbon filtration for the PFAS is certainly one thing, but there are other contaminants that we're concerned about. One thing that the Town of Barnstable could do for us is work with us a little more closely on road salting. And we have very extensive testing in, for many, many years, decades even, of sodium levels in our water supply. And there's certainly a gradual increase every year in the amount of sodium coming into the wells. Some of that is from septic systems, but a lot of it is coming from road salt. And just a personal anecdote, my little side street, we had a ice spell last month, and the amount of salt that was put on a side street to serve three homes was totally excessive in ours, right in our Zone 2, near our well. I get the main streets, but these side streets, road salting, addressing very few people on a very small, short, flat road. It just seems that I think we could do more to work together on that. And Chris is always thinking ahead about his water mains as well. You see, they are, some of them are old. We go back almost 100 years now with some of these pipes. And so we constantly want to be thinking ahead about which segments need priority for replacements. And we're doing one right now. It's on the Lewis Pond Road in Ktowit. And so... And so that's pretty much what we had to say. I don't know, I wasn't quite sure what you were looking for. Having sat here for two hours now, I know. Chris, is there anything you would like to say?
Just that we don't currently have to treat PFAS. We are underneath the EPA's guidance right now, guidelines. So even with their new guidelines, we are still underneath. So we don't see right now happen to, but we haven't had to test any more than less either.
We actually started testing for PFAS before we were required to by the state because we were concerned about that. We know about Mashpee's problems and we're next to Mashpee, so we wanted to get ahead of it. Thank you.
Questions? Council Schnepp.
Thank you and thank you for coming in. Just wanted to clarify a couple of the points you made. You said that 82 new wells were created. Were those people already existing on the water supply? So those were, you're actually removing their usage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's great. And 80% of them were outside of the Zone 2, so they weren't drawing from your water supply?
Yes, ma'am. I have a map, that didn't show. What happened to the map? I guess it didn't make the final cut, apparently.
Might be this one.
Unless it was at the very end.
And I wasn't here for a few minutes of your presentation.
That's it, okay. Yeah, so anyway, we don't consider that they're just tapping into the same Zone 2. Most of them are outside. In fact, if you have a well-manicured lawn on an oceanfront estate in Ktowit, as some people do, and you have a well right there, that's groundwater that's just leaking out to sea and they're capturing it. The nice thing about these private irrigation wells is, in addition to the reduction on our, on demand on our supply, is that when you put a well next to a septic system, it's pumping up the groundwater from underneath the septic system, which is full of nutrients. And you're putting that on the lawn, so it's actually fertilizing it. Our Commissioner Scott Horsley calls it fertigation. And so it's a twofer, right? And that's the best way, if you want to fertilize a lawn, I don't, but if you do, using your own wastewater from your own lot is a good way to do it.
The other question I had is when you're talking about the, under Number 2, the water treatment, are you trying to promote more IAs in certain areas? Is that what you're referring to on the?
Referring to IAs, did you say?
Yeah, we will need expensive treatment.
Yeah, so, well, that needs some.
Or maybe that's Number 1.
It needs some wordsmithing. Will we need is just be a question mark. Obviously, being in a more outlying area, we're probably going to be faced with worrying about the innovative alternative systems and the add-ons, some of which have proven very effective for nitrogen reduction. But, you know, that's obviously an ongoing thing that we're all kind of in the same boat on it.
Great. Sounds like you're doing some innovative things, so appreciate that.
Well, you know, it's a very small district and we don't have a big hunk of water that we can tap into. We're kind of narrow and we want to make sure that it's going to still be there many years to come.
Council Starr.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. My comment is just sort of, I'd like to reinforce the idea about salt because I sit at the Barnstable Village Water District and salt goes up slowly, you know, over years and years and it's no, there's no inexpensive way to get rid of it.
So, I mean, one thing that in addition to reduction in the amount of salt being applied is the compound. There are calcium compounds that work just as well as I understand, but I don't think Barnstable employs them, you might ask.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Guys, good?
Just say something.
Yep.
This is kind of awesome.
But, hey, Chris. Sitting there, I always knew you'd be involved with water because it made me think of, I used to always see you at the parties at Mary Dun Road.
Uh-oh.
I used to see you at the backside of Hathaway's and at the Point. These are high school parties. So I'm not surprised.
Yeah, gotcha. Thanks, Joe.
That was it? No, I didn't mean parties, I just said that was it. I wasn't sure if you had a question, an actual question for. I guess not. So it's reunion, that's good. I did have a quick question. Did you incentivize people to switch to it, other than the fact that they'd be using less water and not paying for it? Did you give them an upfront incentive in another way to switch to an irrigation pump well?
No, but we spent a lot of time educating people about this issue. And we told them it's coming. These rates are going to go right through the roof. If you're irrigating, you might want to consider the capital cost of a well, $5,000 to $7,000. You're going to recoup that in about five years. And then you'll have it for free for the rest of your tenure. And I think that made sense to a lot of people and they've come in and we've had good cooperation with the well drillers and.
Yes.
Do you help them facilitate the actual digging of the well or they're on their own?
No, it's a private property issue.
Just curious. Thought maybe you took a cut or something. All right. Anybody else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking the time. And next we have Hyannis Water Board, Sam Wilson. And we get Hyannis Water Supply at the same time.
Yes, well, we are one and the same.
Depends on the name you want to use.
So I'm Sam Wilson. I'm the Chair of the Barnstable Municipal Water Supply Board.
Yeah, is your mic on?
Oh.
Is the green light on?
Green light's on.
Okay, just pull it a little closer, okay?
Hi, I'm.
Way better, thank you.
I'm Sam Wilson. I'm the Chair of the Barnstable Municipal Water Supply Board and I am here with Hans, who is our Supervisor for the Water Supply Division of the Department of Public Works. So we're going to kind of look here quickly at the past, which was the Barnstable Water Company, the present, which is the Water Supply Division, and then our future, which is clean, affordable water. So let's look a little bit at the past of our water system. So the Barnstable Water Company was founded in 1911. We have some of the oldest pipes in the town in our system. We service the communities of Hyannis, Hyannis Port, and West Hyannis Port, and a few properties over in Centerville, which is the way the piping lays out. It's about 30,000 customers in the summertime. In May 2005, the town of Barnstable acquired the Hyannis Water, sorry, Barnstable Water Company, created the Water Supply Division. We are an enterprise account-funded division of DPW and we will pay off that acquisition debt coming up in 2025. We operate under contract by a company called Veolia. They are a multinational large company. We think that's fantastic. It offers us flexibility and responsibility in our operations and we can draw on global expertise if we were to have an issue. Obviously, we've talked a lot about PFAS tonight. It came to prominence in 2015 for us and we started treating, as both Dan and Mark said, in that time, and we now treat 100% of our water for PFAS. The Water Board. So we are the Barnstable Municipal Water Supply Board, which is quite a mouthful. We meet monthly, we oversee system operations and obviously customer service, capital plans, the financials, and rates. And we advise the town manager on the water supply issues. We are made up of five members. We have three residential ratepayers, two commercial ratepayers as well, and both of those commercial ratepayers happen to live outside the water district, so. And then last year, we renamed ourselves from the Hyannis Water Board. We wanted to do that because we felt the name change better reflected. We serve all the town residents through the extensive commercial uses in our water district. So a quick look at the system map. So as you can see here, a whole bunch of red lines are our pipes. The yellow outline is the current service area and then we have wells. So we have kind of three clusters of wells I like to look at. The first is the Mary Dun Airport. Those are the northernmost ones that spread north of the airport. Then there's the Marer facilities down almost on the Yarmouth Line and then the Straightway, Simmons Ponds, and Hyannis Port southernmost, just north of Craigville Beach Road. We like that because it does provide some kind of concentration of efficiency and filtration and stuff. So we also have treatment facilities at the Marer filtration plant and we kind of treat for a number of different things there. We have a blower, which treats for VOCs or Volta Organic Compounds. We have green sand filtration that treats for iron and manganese. These are naturally occurring elements in our groundwater. And then we have active carbon filtration for PFAS. And then we also have UV filtration, which treats for one for dioxin. We also have conditioned or exterior carbon filtration, which we'll cover in a minute. Our budget. So we have revenues of about $8.5 million a year. Revenues, they can vary each year based on weather, an economy. In a dry summer with lots of people here, we're going to pump more water, we're going to make more money. What year, not a lot of tourists here, it's going to be lower. We have about 7,700 accounts in our system. Operation and management budget of about $5.4 million. We have annual debt service of $3.2 million, which we'll touch a bit on in a minute. We have a capital improvement plan that ranges, it's a big number, $2 million to $40 million. Most of the time, it's around $2 million. The $40 million are specific years when we have to build new plants. Part of that annual budget is $1.5 million in annual pipe replacement. If you think of pipes about $200 a foot, we're averaging about 7,500 feet a year of new pipe. We budget to maintain four months of expenses in surplus. We're not, we have no investors. The town owns us. We don't need to, we can't lose money, but we also don't look to make money and provide a return for any sort of investors. We've been able to limit the annual rate increase to about 5% over the last couple of years. Obviously, with inflation, expenses have gone up. We have very expensive filtration plants that we've had having to build. A big part of that is we have been getting money from the Water Rate Stabilization Fund, which comes from the Vineyard Wind Project. In the last couple of years, it's been about $1 million a year and going ahead, it's probably going to be closer to about half a million a year. But the key is, the general fund, the ratespayers fund the budget. We don't get any money from the general fund, so we still, as an enterprise account, have to sit on our own and, you know, survive in our own dollars. And lastly, every year, the board reevaluates the rates and budgets and we work with outside consultants, which we'll talk about on the next slide. So this is our budget, kind of where it's been from and where it's going. The light purple line is where we've come in, in our planned rate increases. The darker purple would be if we didn't increase our rates at all. The blue is our operating expenses and then that lightly, light blue is our current debt service, which is going to continue to decrease as we pay off. But you'll see some big jumps up in the orange and that's our upcoming debt that we're going to take on. There'll be a big jump, as you can see, in '28, in fiscal year '30, and those are for new treatment plants, which we will talk about further in a moment. So we work with a company called Next Gen Strategies and Solutions to model the rates, budgets, and expenses each year. And they, we do it every single year. We don't do a five-year plan and then sit on it and just hope things go well. And what's great with working with them is they work across the country. So it allows us to get insights on what other systems across the country are facing in terms of their challenges, their fee structures, and what we're doing. Generally, it sounds like we're doing the right stuff and we're ahead of the curve. So present, treating for PFAS. So we have 20 active carbon filtration tanks. Those things are basically giant Brita filters, but a little more advanced. And we're proud to say that we treat 100% for PFAS at each treatment site and provide the best water, we believe, on the case. So we have conditioned units at the Marer and the Mary Dun Wells. Those are indoors. We can run those year-round. Then we have outdoor units at Hyannis Port, Simmons Pond, Straightway, and Airport. In the winter, we have to shut these down because they otherwise will freeze. Fortunately, it matches a kind of seasonal reduction in water needs, but it also does reduce our redundancy a little bit. To give you some expense on costs on these things, it costs $20,000 every time we do immediate exchange on these. In most tanks, we have to exchange three times a year. So you think about that, 20 tanks, three times per year, at $20,000 per exchange, you're looking at about $1.2 million alone in the cost of cleaning that PFAS out of all those. That's about a quarter of our operating budget. But maybe not the exact cheapest way we could do it, but the great thing about these systems are, we can reuse the media, they can go off, be processed, the PFAS be cleaned out, recycled, and reused. And that's part of the little bit of some cost savings that we can get in there. And they're also more environmentally friendly than media that would get disposed of in a, in a off-site, you know, basically dump. So looking ahead in the future for treating water, we're looking to, we're in the process and the design phase of a combined Straightway and Hyannis Port treatment facility. This is going to cost about $36 billion. That's that first big jump in the orange that you saw on the budget. We're expecting delivery around 2026, so coming up soon. The next is the lead service line replacement. So this is an EPA mandated program as a result of what happened in Flint, Michigan. The supply line or the water service line is the privately-owned line that runs from the street and the service cutoff into the person's house. We are currently in the process of evaluating how many lines we'll need to replace, although we don't expect a high percentage. That's kind of our initial estimate, but we're in the process of identifying any that would need to get replaced and then be replaced. And then thirdly, Mary Dun Airport Treatment Plant. So we're in the preliminary design phase of this, expected to cost about $27 million in delivery in 2028. When this comes online, we'll have advanced, modern filtration plants at every single one of our current wellheads. But we also need to look for additional water supply. The immediate way we're doing this is Mary Dun Well Number 4. We have, at this moment, a request for bid out to build a new well building. We already have the well in place, but we need to put the well building on top and put the pump at the bottom and get it all connected to the system. This will add 500 gallons per minute, which is about a 10% increase in pumping capacity. This is going to be especially important in the summer. We were hoping to get online this summer, but it looks like we're just lead time for supplies and materials, which is probably not going to be this summer, but definitely summer of next year. The other way is our new well exploration program. This is about a 10-year horizon to look for new wells. And we're looking at multiple locations in the town, although these are outside our current service areas. We have two areas that we are, we have identified so far and we continue to do exploration work on. The first is in West Barnstable off Route 149, at the previously mentioned Bridge Creek Conservation Area. And the other is off of Old Jalen, the conservation area that's north of Route 6. So on these maps, if you can see, there's a red, a couple of red dots, one in West Barnstable, two in Barnstable. That's where we have drilled already as part of our initial phase of exploration. We also had looked at other sites and found that those were not as viable as these in terms of water production, long-term, and other long-term viability. The next steps will be this summer, going out and drilling more test wells to figure out better, what's the best locations within those areas and then ultimately deciding which site is economically and in terms of water quality and capacity, the best one to move forward with and then going through the both political and economic steps of making that possible. So in conclusion, we are the town's Municipal Water Supply Division, but we have ratepayer oversight. We have challenges ahead to maintain water quality, source, distribution, but we are tackling those and we are willing to take those challenges on. At the end of the day, I always feel like this way, we always are striving to deliver the best quality water at the most affordable rate possible. So, any questions?
Thank you for that presentation, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Council Lutke.
Yeah, a couple of things. Thank you, Sam. That was great and nice to see Hans. There was one question that was submitted by a constituent about the asbestos concrete pipes. Anything to discuss on that? Is that an issue at all?
Hans is going to be the technically best person to answer this question.
Yeah, I'll do my best. Hans, guys, I'm the Supervisor of the Water Supply Division, DPW. AC pipe is basically an issue. There's two different issues with AC pipe. One is a water quality issue, where there is a potential for flaking off the material and asbestos fibers getting into the drinking water supply. What we do is we do periodic testing. We're required to do that. And the latest testing was done in 2022. The test results are no detect and they're available online. We post those on the Water Supply Division part of the website, so you can always check. The other part is some AC pipe also has a vinyl liner in it. That's how it came when it was installed. And the reason why they put a vinyl liner in when this was installed in the '60s and '70s was trying to avoid the issue I just talked about. '70s was trying to avoid the issue I just talked about. But what happened instead, they made it worse. Because what happened is that the vinyl liner, how it was sprayed on, was with a PCB type of material, and that did not evaporate, so you created a situation where the contaminant leaked or leached into the drinking water. That's the reason why, long-term, we're planning to get rid of all the AC pipe, AC and ACVL pipe. We started that project as part of our pipe replacement program in fiscal year 2010. It's basically a 30-year phased program. It's a long-term project. The fiscal year 25CIP for the $1.5 million is actually allocated to exactly that, the replacement of AC pipe in the Longview area, Longview Drive area of Hyannis. And the other thing, what we're trying to do is do it as cost-effective as possible, and in this case, we team up with the sewer expansion program from DPW. So we're trying to dig up the road once and do both things at the same time. It's a long-term problem and a long-term solution, so we're in the middle, basically, of working on that.
Okay, where is that vinyl lined pipe? Do we have an accurate map of exactly where it is?
It's fairly accurate, but not perfect. It's basically, we have about 35 miles of it, okay?
It's quite a bit.
Yes. The whole water system is about 107 miles.
Wow.
So it's not something you can fix overnight.
Is it prioritized, Hans? Is that what you're working on first for replacing, or no?
It is one of the priorities.
Okay.
The other priorities while we deal with is insufficient fire flow, which basically means too small diameter of pipes.
Exactly.
So it's basically a mix and match. We try to do whatever we can, we work from large to small, so the transmission mains first, the larger mains, and then after they are done, then go into the neighborhoods. Just because of the impact of fixing transmission mains, you basically impact more customers.
Now, should people be filtering for PCBs at their homes?
No. Well, they can if they want to, but it's not needed, because what we do, what we do is we, every spring, we have a flushing program where we flush the water and clean out the mains. And at certain spots, we have what we call bleeders that basically constantly run at dead-end spots where we have vinyl lined AC pipe, and that will keep water flowing and keep the concentrations down.
But the PCBs that are flushed, that go down the road and into the ocean, those are of no consequence?
It is a very low concentration.
Okay.
And the other thing, too, is we sample twice a year at these various locations.
Okay, fantastic, that was fantastic. That was really a great answer to that, really makes it much more understandable. Thank you for my constituent. And I just wanted to make one comment, because I couldn't do rebuttal earlier when Mr. Els came up. And I've been on the tour with these two gentlemen of the Mahar Wells, and I'm going to be the first one to be the cheerleader of how fantastic a job they do. Sam is also a neighbor of mine. I couldn't say enough, but I do want to say, and Councilor Bloom mentioned it, and I think Councilor Penn was involved, for those of us who lived in Hyannis and drank the water for the 10 years between 2006 and '16, we were exposed to excessive levels of PFAS from a point source, that being the AFF, foam, firefighting foam. And there's a reason why the Centers for Disease Control came here to do a study. It wasn't because of the ubiquitous nature of PFAS in our pots and pans and our burger wrappers, it was because there was a specific exposure here, and I don't think the town should negate that. I think Dr. Shader, we should all look forward to her presentation and not try to maybe greenwash those of us who were exposed and do have some, I think, legitimate concerns about the level of PFAS we have in our blood. And this isn't a comment on you, it just, it seems to happen at every town council meeting where I bring this up, it's then negated by this ubiquitous nature. And we just heard from Katuut that they're not filtering for PFAS. I don't know why the ubiquitous nature of PFAS is not impacting the water in Katuut. So just, I think it's really important for the town to recognize that, that there was a period, that's why the Centers for Disease Control came here, and they did a study, and let's let the results come out. And again, it has nothing to do, the past, the present, and the future, these are separate situations, but let's not forget the past. But what you're doing right now, absolutely, I'm your biggest cheerleader, and you guys know that, and it's incredible. And yes, we're out in the forefront, because we have to be in the forefront, because our groundwater is, is very, still highly contaminated with PFAS. So thank you for an opportunity to say that.
Thank you, Council Lucky.
Council Bloom? Oh, you're chewing. I have a quick question, let me ask first, I'll let you chew, okay? Concerning future development in Hyannis, particularly multifamily housing, are you ever consulted about capacity or concerned about capacity of water to support the growth that's planned? Or maybe not yet planned? But are you up to date on that, in part work with planning and development and other people for that?
Yes, I am a part of the staff site plan review committee. We meet every Tuesday afternoon, and all development goes through or comes through the committee, so yes, we do see that. The other question was, am I concerned? Yes, I know. The issue is, right now, we do have enough capacity to handle the summer demand, so there is enough water.
Yeah, but for example, if there were 500 total units, let's say, in the next two and a half years added to the Hyannis water supply, would that make a difference? I'm just curious, I have no idea.
Yeah, basically, no, we can handle that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the good part. The way redundancy is argued in front of, and this is part of the DP, Mass DP regulations, is they want you to have, as a water system, extra capacity redundancy. And the way the rule reads is, you basically need to be able to deal with summer demand, so the highest, the highest demand with your largest treatment plant offline. So that's a lot of redundancy. And at this moment, we can't do that. And that is why we are, one of the many reasons why we need updated, more plans and more updated plans, so we can.
So that's where the 1.8 million gallon shortage comes in?
Exactly, exactly. The other issue is, of course, you know, if you have an extreme dry year, you have a lot of people on the Cape on July, you know, Fourth holiday weekend, and one or two or three wells break down for whatever reason, we would obviously be in trouble. But that's the reason why we spend so much money and also ask for money to make sure we can redo our wells in the winter, like put new motors in, pull them out, check them out, repair them. That is why preventive maintenance is so important and so a big part of what we do.
And because Violi's working on the fiscal year cycle, that's part of their deliberations every month to us, is what's going on in terms of everything from system flushing to, you know, valve exercising, to maintenance on wells. And that all has to wrap up by, basically, the beginning of the summer. So that system's in place to, you know, make sure that that maintenance is being done in the slower times so that we're ready, ready for the peak season.
Thank you. Council Bloom.
Okay. So the redundancy that you just spoke about, is that a well somewhere that you want to sink?
Yeah. Well, wells, wells, right now, we have things concentrated, we have, you know, we have, our wells are relatively concentrated, they're not spread out like some of the other systems. So we're looking to basically spread out and get to that point where we have more different locations that we can draw from, and more different.
So, so then the redundancy would, for Hyannis, would be to pump water from somewhere else in town to the filtration units that are, the carbon filtration units that are right off of, or would they have their own carbon filtration units?
Yeah, basically, when you take water out of the ground here on, here on Cape, is you always have to do a certain amount of treatment. It has to do with balancing the pH, because groundwater is naturally kind of low, pretty acid here, very low pH, so you have to, it's one of the many DEP requirements to increase the pH to its neutral, so you don't have corrosion in your pipes. Chlorination, there's a whole bunch of balancing acts you have to do with the water before it's ready for treatment. And one of them is, if you have contaminants in the ground, you have to treat for them. It's the most cost-effective to do that close to a cluster of wells.
So with regard to the PFAS, though, where do you treat the PFAS for the redundancy, the wells that are, the well that will be redundancy for the Hyannis water system? Where will, where will that water be treated?
We haven't made that.
For, not for, for PFAS, rather?
Most likely at well, at the wellhead site.
At the, at the site of the well?
At the site, so where the well would, you know, pumps up somewhere relatively close nearby.
Yeah.
You know, and then at that point, it will go into our distribution system.
So would that well also, if we don't need it for, if, you know, will that water be able to provide clean, treated water to other parts of the town? Or would, would the pipe just go to Hyannis?
Well, so at this current moment, our system, the way it's designed, we have interconnects with Comm and with Yarmouth. Yarmouth, that was mentioned previously, because we had to take water from them. I know the Yarmouth interconnect is a one-way interconnect from Yarmouth, so it really comes down to, if we can get two-way interconnects with the different systems, you know, then you can just open a valve if needed to connect, you know, say, hey, if you need water, okay, we'll send you our treated water from our pipe down to your system.
Okay. About the, the concrete pipes, you called it, what, something C, AC or something like that?
Yes, AC, asbestos cement pipe.
Pardon me?
Asbestos cement pipe.
Ah, asbestos, so we have, we have 35 miles in Hyannis of asbestos cement pipe. Wow. That's kind of shocking. That's a lot of pipe with a lot of asbestos in it. And I'm surprised that, you know, we're not taking care of that a little quicker than 30 years.
We have, you know, we could, we could, we could theoretically replace, given unlimited funds, unlimited manpower, replace everything in a year. But the way we raise our funds is it's our ratepayers, and so we're trying to find that balancing act of how much our water costs for our ratepayers, and we do use a graduated system versus how quickly we can both replace our pipes, build our water treatment facilities using state revolving funds and different funding sources.
Yeah.
And we actually, so we used to replace pipe at about $1 million a year. I think about two years ago, we bumped that budget up to 1.5 million, in part because of the increasing cost of people, the new pipe, you know, inflation.
Thank you.
You good? Council Star.
I'll be quick. So it seems, so tell me, this asbestos pipe has been there since before you bought, before we bought the system?
Correct.
Okay. It's just, I think, I don't, I want to make sure people understand what shape the system was in when we, when we bought it, and how much capital we had to put in to fix, I mean, to get it back up to standards.
Yeah, AC pipe was, was installed basically from 1945 till '75, so for a long time, it was a fairly cheap, quick solution for an expansion of a, at that moment, a private water company. At this moment, I do want to tell you that, and make sure that also the people that watch us know that we do regularly sample for asbestos, and that, you know, we do have a no detect, so water quality-wise, it's not an issue. And at the same time, we are replacing as quickly as possible and as economically as possible the pipe.
No, yeah, I just, I just wanted people to understand how, where you started from. You know, and if you look ahead, you want $36 million for a treatment plant for 2026, and then $26 million for another treatment plant. And I've been to some of your meetings, and the, and the ratepayers are paying seven, seven percent, somewhere between 5 and 7%, it's been going up.
It was, we had one larger bump, I think, in 2020 of seven, and then we've been able to keep it at five. And we hope to keep it at five for at least the next couple of years. Again, huge amount thanks to getting that additional funding from the Vineyard Wind Project. But yeah, things are, things are expensive, and everything's gotten really expensive the last couple of years. I mean, the Mar facility was 27 million?
No.
Were you listening?
Way less.
Wait, that's 17, is that by power tent?
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was a world-class facility when that was built, and we're basically building more of those, and they're kind of almost doubling in price.
I know, and you're, and Hyannis is sort of in a unique, highly dense position.
Yeah.
You know, of rate, you know, people living there. So you need, you need, you need the treatment plants.
We need the treatment plants, we supply.
And we all use Hyannis, so I don't know.
We're the primary water supplier to the hospital. While they have an, they have a hookup to Yarmouth as well as a redundancy, but we, we're their primary supplier, along with most of the grocery stores, most of the businesses and offices.
Okay.
Including this building.
Thank you.
I've got Council Lucky and then Council Mendez.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on something, and Councilor Schnepp called it innovative, what Katuut was doing, and I'm intrigued by that. I thought that idea where they've had the 80 or so wells for the folks that are closer to the ocean to irrigate, and I know in my precinct, you know, the further, or the closer we get to the water, the bigger the lawns, the greener they are. And when I'm out walking in the morning, you know, they're being irrigated to the point that they're running down the street and down into the ocean. Have we, could we get with, with, with the folks in Katuut and maybe take a play from their book there and see if we could do some of these wells in, in the Hyannis, or what you're, the Barnstall Water, whatever your name is right now, but could we look at that? Is that something Hans and Sam, that you, that sounded very innovative and, and smart for these folks who desire these large green lawns that, have we thought about that? Are you, I mean, are you in touch with Katuut?
Well, we'll definitely have a look at that, because it sounds intriguing, you're correct.
And, and I know one of our neighbors has already brought it up to me about, you know, to save money to, to move off of, you know, his irrigation system being on town water and moving to his own well.
Well, and, you know, as I say, you are one of my neighbors, you, you see the same thing. I mean, the streets are just, the water is just running down, I mean, it's craziness. So it would be nice, Hans, if you could look into that and, you know, let people know what you find out, and I think people might do that, right?
There, there's some people who probably would, especially during a renovation of a house or, you know, large landscaping project.
And I don't know, Katuut's sitting here, how, how deep do these wells have to be? They can't be enormously deep, are they?
No, they're shallow wells.
Right, so, I mean, it just really sounds like something smart to look at for your district. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Mendez.
Thank you, President Penn. Just a quick question. How long is the Vineyard Wind Monday? How, how long are you going to get money from Vineyard Wind?
Mike Millen would know that question exactly, but I think it's like 16 years from starts.
Okay, that's interesting, thank you.
It's been a million, but as Vineyard Wind becomes operational and they start getting taxed on their properties, that money will go in the general fund, and so that, we expect that number to reduce to about half a million going forward. But it's not, it's not a specific hard set number. But it's not, it's not a specific hard set number.
Council Lucky.
Sorry, just one more question because you mentioned the hospital. Do, what do they pay for their water?
The hospital has a lot of different accounts. So I can't give you a, you know, a dollar figure, but they would be charged a commercial rate.
A commercial rate, okay. Thank you.
I just have a comment about using less water. I think this entire town should, every water department should encourage everybody to replace the lawn with a clover lawn because you hardly have to irrigate at all. So you could even save the expense of a well dedicated to irrigation. And you probably don't have to mow a whole bunch and you don't have to water. So it sounds like a plan to me and the bees will love it. And it's green. What's wrong with green? You know, just different kind of green.
Less fertilizer, too.
Yeah, you don't need it. Exactly. So I'm all for that. Yeah, Town Manager's sighing in the back row because I've had this conversation with him before. So I'll be quiet now. All right, thank you, gentlemen. It was excellent.
Thank you.
We will get on to last, but definitely not least, the West Barnstable Water Commission. I believe this is Brian Paradise.
I am.
Nice to meet you and thank you for waiting all this time.
My pleasure.
Last but not least.
Well, it's kind of least. I'm definitely not as exciting as the gentleman that spoke before. As most of you know, West Barnstable is made up primarily of private wells. We have a few small neighborhoods that are tucked into Com water in some spots. So we were a fully volunteer Board for Water Commissioners. We have no stipend, no insurance, no, you know, it's really just us looking out for our West Barnstable water. It started, they used to meet twice a year, but as things have come to light with the Hyannis-Barnstable municipal water system thing in Bridge Creek, it has raised a lot of eyebrows in West Barnstable, as I'm sure some of you may have heard. And as well, the substation in West Barnstable, you know, with the conflicting stories on the dialectic fluids. And, you know, it's our, it's been our place to try to get facts before acts. So, you know, really, our sole purpose is to just look out for our residents, you know, make sure they know where to get their water tested and that they should be doing it annually. And to make sure they know the posted dates for hazardous material pickup so they're not keeping those materials around their house. You know, and, you know, as of now, we're meeting twice a month. And I say that lightly because this is my seventh meeting in two weeks. So it's been amped up a little bit. And so we're watching Bridge Creek very closely from our standpoint. So that's really, that's really where we are.
Thank you for that. So what you're saying about Bridge Creek is that there's a little bit of animosity in the village about sharing their water with another village?
Absolutely. Yes.
The one we're sitting in here tonight specifically?
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of variables, a lot of opinions. You know, I could go through a bunch of them, but it's all depends on who you talk to.
Yeah, that's what happens when you have a really great water supply.
Well, yeah. And, you know, and, you know, it may not be me, it may not be my children, but, you know, that goes in, that takes away West Barnstable's viability for their own water. So.
Questions for Mr. Perry? Yes. Council Tamish.
Obviously, West Barnstable does not have a water system as yet. Do you anticipate or have a timeframe on when that may happen? I mean, obviously, you don't have, perhaps have the population to support it or the distances and all those different things come into play. But, you know, where are you in establishing a system?
So West Barnstable would be, would be a hard fight to establish a water system. And we're one of the largest villages in Barnstable with our 3,000 residents. Obviously, you all know West Barnstable, it's not, we're not, we're spread out. Everybody is on at least an acre and it's a lot of land to cover for, you know, not a lot of, not a lot of payback, you know? The price, the price point to put the water system in would take forever to pay back on itself. So, you know, there's options, as some would say, but, you know, there's just a lot of people worried about the conservation land. And, you know, we've talked about all this sewer water getting pumped to Hyannis and not being replenished. Well, if they want to pump that water out of Bridge Creek and send it to Hyannis, that water is going back into the ground at Hyannis. So it's, a lot of people, like I said, I have a thousand different birds on my shoulder speaking, you know? Every chance somebody gets, you know, I can't even get a coffee. So it's, it's a, you know, it's quiet in West Barnstable and this doesn't take much to stir things up a little bit.
That's true. Council, Councila Burdick.
For once, I have something. Yes, it was. I was just going to ask, by what authority will the Hyannis Water System be able to use that land in West Barnstable? Is it because it's the town's land? Is it a home rule or does it fall within the West Barnstable Fire District's enabling legislation? How does that work?
That's a, it's a great question. It depends on whose lawyer you talk to. West Barnstable Water Commission is seeking our own counsel as far as finding out if that land is Article 97 or conservation land, how it got acquired, you know, what the sole purpose was and moving forward there. So for the first time in the, since the conception of the West Barnstable Water District, we have a budget. It's not a big budget, but we have a budget. So that's, so that's still sort of under, it's being addressed. And the town's been good about coming and they've had, they've come and, you know, explained their steps and what's moving forward and, you know, the viability and the gallons per minute that they need and what, you know, may be available there. So there's more to do. And, you know, it may end up going through, but then that's another part of our job to make sure that those wells are surrounded by neighbors on private wells, you know, where some of them are drilled to 40 feet. So that's a shallow well for drinking water. And there should be mitigation in place and they'll do the testing around all those wells. But some mitigation through the town or the Hyannis Water System that if these wells do start to have problems or run dry or fail, that West Barnstable residents shouldn't have to put up their own money for issues that are getting pulled out into Hyannis.
Does anyone have, anyone in the town staff having an answer for what I asked? Like more direct, what our end of it is without any? Just the rationale, that's all I'm curious about.
It sounds to me like more of a legal department answer what you're asking for. So the only thing I can tell you is that it's municipal land. And besides that, I refer to the legal department.
Sorry.
So it's municipal land in the village of West Barnstable?
Like I said, depends on who's lawyer.
Within your borders.
Yeah, who's lawyer you talk to.
Uh-oh.
Mark Els, Town Manager. Thank you. Can I? Clover, I've converted my lawn to clover. I wasn't.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm a beekeeper as well. Thank you for that question. It's a really good one. It's under review by legal. Now, I came up, though, for a completely different reason relevant to this. When we embarked on looking at where we might cite future wells, the Town Council very clearly told us to look townwide and told us to look specifically at municipally owned parcels. And so DPW took that direction from the Town Council and has proceeded with the evaluation of these future potential sites. We're all Barnstable. We absolutely don't want to, I want you to have a cup of coffee and not, I get what you're saying. So we're going to work together with them. We don't have a legal opinion on that. But I point it out because many of you weren't sitting here, yet we're from, I think they came out with the first results in 2019 on this and now we're in '24. So a working discussion with the council on this and how you would like to see us proceed. You've heard the reasoning why we're looking. In the end, we want to, we don't want to create issues for West Barnstable. West Barnstable's us. We want to all work together to make sure we put them in the right place with the best quality to the capacity that we need. So that's why I came up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, of course.
Other questions?
Council Lucky.
Yeah, a couple of questions. How do you create a budget out of nothing?
So we are funded through the West Barnstable Fire District. So just like any of the other districts, so, you know, Com has the Water District, Fire District, and then the Prudential Committee. So we have the same, we just don't have the income from water.
From water, okay.
So any budget that we get has to go into the warrant for the annual meeting for the Fire District.
And you said you're doing something right now? You're doing some sort of study or evaluation or?
We are looking into that, yes.
Okay. So you're really in a, you know, trust but verify with these gentlemen here that, you know?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then the second question is, what kind of filtering are people having to do in West Barnstable? Do you have any kind of a percentage of those who do filter or those who don't? What are they finding? Or what do you recommend?
So a lot of people will filter for solids, you know, iron and, you know, dissolved solids because really the biggest problem in West Barnstable is over the course of time, when you're running that private well, it actually breaks down the copper. And so a lot of West Barnstable people you hear that ran their houses on wells for 30, 40 years, everybody's had pinhole leaks, ting, ting, ting. I get my water tested yearly. I don't have a filter right now.
What do you find in your testing?
My water's always fine. It's a little high in iron, you know, probably a little acidic. I don't have the pH tested, but, you know, it's, it's good water.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Questions on my left? No? Oh, I'm sorry, Council Schnepp.
Thank you. Where does your Fire District get its water?
So the Fire District, I believe, when they have to fill their tankers, I believe that they contact Com and fill off of their hydrants or Barnstable. So that's to fill their tankers. And then we do have, we do have some hydrants in our district, obviously, because Com Water does spill in to West Barnstable in certain spots.
Thank you. Interesting. Council Tamish.
Just as a point of emphasis on that question, I happen to know that in the area of the Rooster Church, there's some cisterns that are 20,000 or 30,000 gallons. And I think they have a couple, maybe at least one other location that has cisterns so water is stored. Plus, West Barnstable has a large water tanker that they have available.
So the Rooster Church, there's the office building down the road from Lombard Field and Our Lady of Hope. All have private cisterns on property.
Councilor Starr? Did you have a question? You good?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Everybody good? That was great.
All right, thank you, Councilors.
I mean, we went from the largest water to the smaller, to no water, really. No water company. It was fabulous. What a contrast. Thank you for that presentation. That's terrific. Yeah, any follow-up questions that we have? Go ahead.
For Craig Crocker, just out of curiosity, Mr. Wilson mentioned lead pipes and some of the remediation work that they're doing. Is that an issue in Com at all?
It is not an issue. We do our lead and copper sampling and we don't have any detex above the 90th percentile. They did just revise the lead and copper rule, which he was, he was speaking about, where we have to go out and evaluate our piping and even the piping on private property. We, we have, we're in the process of evaluating that. We didn't have any lead service pipes going to the customers. We had a small, we call it a gooseneck. They used to install back in the 50s and 60s, I believe. It's just a small little connection at the water main and then goes to the, to the service pipe. So we're in the process of evaluating all that, getting a count on those. But we've, right now, it's a real small percentage. A lot of them were removed during the, during the Vineyard Wind Project as far as Strawberry Hill Road, some of that old cast iron piping had those small goosenecks. The state hasn't ruled yet if that is considered a full lead service line, like you see in, like in Flint, Michigan or in other, other areas where the whole service, 50, 60 feet or whatever, was all lead. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Council Crowe.
Craig, I didn't have a chance earlier to thank you for all you've done for all these years. I've known you quite a long time. I've always been impressed by the Com Water Department and the way they, they do their business. And as a customer, I've always noticed that they, I've always known that their water is the top quality. So it goes a lot to what you're doing and I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. We've got a great staff and, you know, the Water, from the Water Commissioners, Prudential Committee, right on down, and our community is great, too. They, they support all our funding every year at our annual district meetings and they're really the real reason why we're, where we're at. Thank you.
Council Lucky.
I had one, a follow-up for Dan Santos, and that has to do with the lenses. You talked about the six different lenses and how we have a sole source aquifer. How do those lenses communicate or transfer with one another? For example, if one lens is infiltrated with something, does it stay within that lens and then does it go to the ocean? Or do the lenses communicate somehow?
I had mentioned that earlier. They don't communicate. No. And because it's generally, there are rivers or inlets, there are water features that keep the lenses separate. And so if contamination happens in the Sagamore lens, it's not going to move to the Montmoi lens and vice versa. They are independent units.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Santos while he's here? No? Okay. Mr. Hanson.
Good evening, President Penn. How are you? Thank you, Council members, for putting on this seminar tonight. Appreciate that. Peter Hanson, I'm a Com Water Commissioner. And I do commend Craig and the whole crew. and staff for what they do. Excellent department, some of the best water in the country, and they work very hard to accomplish that. I was going to talk a little bit tonight about my concern on the substations. I'm not going to go into that because I think there's, I want to be better prepared, and I want to, this whole controversy with the dielectric fluid, is it toxic, is it not toxic? There's actually two different or three different types of dielectric fluid. The one that, and I disagree with Dan Santos on his analysis of what's going to be used for the substations. My understanding is that the type of dielectric fluid is going to be a lot more toxic that's actually going to be used. The type that he described is almost like a mineral oil. And I don't want to get into a debate tonight about that. I like to put together a presentation with facts on regarding the substations, the amount of dielectric fluid, the quantities that each of these are going to have, and to either come back during a regular council meeting or another seminar here and present that. And just want some feedback from the council. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe since we're focused on water and we're going to have three workshops on water, maybe we can work it in, since we did so much work on PFAS tonight, and we're going to do another more in-depth session on that, maybe we can combine that and do half and half or something like that, rather than add more. If we find that there's too much information on the PFAS one, then we can continue to that because education is important for everybody, and everybody needs to know the same information, and we need facts and not myths, and that's the most important thing to us. Yes? Councilor Mendez?
If we're going to go down this road, then we need to have experts.
No, exactly. Yeah.
Not opinion.
Yeah.
Experts.
No, I hear you.
Nothing against you, Mr. Hanson.
These will be facts.
I'm just saying, no. Experts in the field.
Okay. Good suggestion.
Agreed.
Everybody's listening. We all heard you. Good to know. All information's good information, and experts would be great, if we can find them. Okay. Councilor Luggie.
I just want to echo what you said, President Penn, because we had an enormous amount of questions from our constituents that had to do with the very subject you're bringing up, sir. So I think we owe these people answers in the best way possible. So thank you for bringing that up, and I applaud that we will look at this in greater detail because these questions were not answered tonight.
Yeah, well, I mean, the main concern from everybody is effects on sole source aquifer, which is our water supply, obviously. And I don't know how we can't address that, even though I kind of shied away from it in the beginning because I don't, it's the gorilla in the room. I don't want it monopolizing everything because there's so much to know about water in this town in general. But it is, like I said, very important to know because we could hear tonight this take on it and that take on it. And there we go. We're far enough apart. So we'll get experts to speak to us about it, and we'll hear from locals, and we'll hear from the people who are working to keep our water clean. And like I said, the two workshops that are planned now are surface and coastal resources and the PFAS contamination, excuse me. So we may rework this and see what's happening. And for the people at home, I know they're frustrated, but we just don't have a facility big enough where we can bring in. If we get too many people in this room, they just close the meeting down, the meeting doesn't happen. So what good is that? I mean, that's awful. And unfortunately, we're working on it. We cannot televise live from the auditoriums we have at Barnstable High School right now. They're not capable of doing that. So we're working on that, you know? We've already talked about it, and we're getting information and a plan. But in the meantime, we'll keep this format for the next workshops that we're doing. And we really appreciate everybody listening at home. We hope when you do give us input that you do it in the form of questions because statements don't help us, really. It's the questions that we need to know, and that way we can get answers to your questions. Okay? Okay. Councilor Crowe?
Thank you, President Penn. I think a lot of people out there, myself included, were thinking that a lot of this meeting would be on what the opinions and what the views of the different water districts would be on the actual substations in their districts, and what the implications of those, what the dangers and what the benefits, and that kind of stuff. And Councilor Mendez is correct. I think we need some experts to just talk about those implications. And so I'd like to see that happen in another meeting where we're talking about water quality here, but I also like to have those, I understand there's a lot of people who are talking about this, a lot of these districts are talking about this, and I think we need a fuller hearing on that. But thank you.
Okay. We may have just a dedicated meeting just for that. Councilor Burdick?
I just, I have a question, I guess, but more of a statement. I'm just curious about why there is such skepticism about our Department of Public Works and their opinion on these topics.
I don't have the answer. Does somebody like to tackle that? Silence.
Well, I might address.
Go right ahead.
I think if you look back to that meeting in October at the high school, I think that gives you some insight into that, is that I think a lot of folks think decisions are made out of the public view. And I think that could be part of what we're looking at here, that there's, and I meant to use the phrase "trust but verify" when we were talking about West Barnstable water. I think that's a big part of it, is that I think for many years, I think the thought from the outside was that there's too many decisions being made without a lot of public input. Public input is awkward, it's messy, but it's so valuable, and I think that's part of it. And it's a trust but verify. That's what I think. And that's why they have Kelly. I mean, Kelly's a recent hire, right, Dan? I mean, and she said you need to do more outreach. And I think that's it. I don't know that people don't trust Dan. I just think they need the verification piece, and they need a little more outreach to feel comfortable because for years they didn't have that. And again, those who sat in that high school auditorium, I would hope you would have sensed that from the audience, that we're not doing a good enough job communicating with our constituents and being honest and reaching out and listening to them and recognizing fears. I mean, unknowns are very frightening. That's my take on this.
Anybody else want to comment while we're commenting?
Sure.
All right. Councilor Mendez?
Before I joined council, everything this council decided, I could read about. What it is, is that when people don't know, they Google, just like I do, or whatever, and they get information. They choose to believe whatever information carries their narrative, just like any other subject. They don't listen to science, and I'm not saying this on either side, for or against, because I'm not a scientist. That's why I say I want experts and professionals in here, because that's how I form my opinion, but that's not me. Because to be honest with you, I don't have an agenda. So people will Google, just like your favorite sports star, okay? If your favorite sports star plays for the Red Sox, he's your favorite. If he goes to the Yankees, you hate him. It's no different. People listen to the information that carries their narrative, just like Fox News, MSNBC, and CNN. Whatever place you fall on, that's the narrative you listen to. So that's what you want to believe. You believe the narrative that is presented to you that backs up what you want to be true. And it's just not on this subject. That's the problem with this whole country. Walter Cronkite ain't walking through that door anymore. Those days are over. So this, what's going on with us with wind power is a miracle of what's going on in this whole country right now. People get in their corners, they believe what they want to believe, no matter what the facts are. So that's the issue.
Well, hopefully, we'll have some experts, and we can fight it out as we choose, and hopefully, we'll hear good information and keep the discourse open. That's my goal. Did you have a comment? Oh, Councilor Schnapp.
Will we be having, are we at discussion, by any chance, on the agenda?
We're beyond discussion.
We're beyond discussion. I just, well, I'd like to just thank everyone who came tonight because, you know, you've been here for several hours, and it's great to see all of our water districts and even Barnstable in writing. And it was an opportunity for me to kind of get some interesting facts about how so much of our water decisions are driven by those peak summer months that we have. I mean, June, July, and August. I mean, it's the whole story. And if the formula for the redundancy is based on those peak months, boy, that sure puts a lot of pressure on us to be, you know, managing our water resources. And to the extent that, I know you guys do work together and you work with the town, you know, that there are, I don't know if the state allows you to have agreements so that if someone's offline, you can hook up to another water district so that that redundancy equation might not require, you know, so much extra water. I think that we are entering an era where we do have to be looking at conservation more seriously and some of the, you know, whatever's going on in Katuut and, you know, COM, I'm sure we have several property owners that might be able to do private wells for their irrigation. I think those are all great ideas, and I'd like to come away from tonight, not just, you know, I think we know a lot about the protection efforts, but, you know, ways that we can really look at our water as a full community. And West Barnstable, I understand why you're, you know, a little fearful here that, you know, that all the water is just going to get sucked out of West Barnstable. But we are a town, and I think that there are ways that we can work together, and we're going to have to struggle to work together on some of these issues where we come from different perspectives. And I think that getting subjectmatic experts into our meetings might be the best way forward because I think that people are pretty ingrained in some of their, you know, the information they've already absorbed, and I think how it affects them emotionally. I mean, for those of you in Hyannis who've been subjected to the PFAS, even though we have removed it from the drinking water, you're sitting there with test results that say, hey, you know, I have had an impact. And so your sense of worry about what's next is going to be a little bit more elevated than those of us who, you know, don't feel like it's as big of a concern. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Tamish, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
No.
Oh. He changed his mind. Okay. All right. Hearing no other questions, I think we went through what we could for the public. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to everybody.
Thank you all.